Good evening. I call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting here on Wednesday, 11 June 2025. Madam Secretary, would you call the rule?
Commissioner Simpson?
President.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson is here. Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Carmichael, or Chairperson Carmichael, sorry.
Here. We have a quorum. Would everyone please, everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as long as everybody's standing, anyone who is going to testify has to be sworn in, so please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you give will be the complete truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Two reminders. First, make sure your phones and any electronic devices are on mute. And a reminder that anyone who testifies has to sign in with their name and contact information, either in the hallway on the sign-in sheet or at the podium. Next item is approval of the minutes of the May 14 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Sharp?
Second. Simpson?
Second, Simpson. I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson, yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Okay. Under due business, first, PCC 002-2025, a request from Ryan Companies U.S. Incorporated for the property at 701 Oakmont Lane in Westmont for the following. First, a preliminary plat of subdivision to subdivide one lot into two lots in the Office Research District. And second, a site and landscape plan approval.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name's Eric Nordine. I'm with Ryan Companies. We are a real estate development and construction company. I'm joined by a couple of team members here. I've got Zach Thor on my civil engineering team, and then we've got Betsy Gates Alford, who is our land use attorney. We're here for a pretty simple request, and I'm going to kind of tee this up and then just get out of the way. I heard you just say what it is, which is that we own a parcel of land. We'd like to subdivide that parcel into two parcels of land. So I'm going to give you just a little context and background, and then we'll go through a little bit of some of the technicalities, and then we'll hand it over to staff report. So the history of the site, so this site is located west of Pasquenelli Drive in the Oakmont Office Park subdivision. It's near the Papadou Restaurant, if you guys are familiar with this location. But it was originally developed sometime in the 60s or 70s with an office building, and Ryan Companies, my company, acquired the asset in 2018 with the intent of redeveloping the property, which we did, and we went through a process with the village at that time for the zoning and landscaping approval and so on. And we delivered some version of what used to be there, which is really two office buildings and the surrounding parking amenities that support the use. The three parcels that exist today, you can see here, the one in question that we're talking about is 701 Oakmont Lane, which is in yellow here. This is a, I would call it kind of a remnant piece. Half of this lot is still needed. We have an ongoing obligation with the declaration for the association to provide 265 surface parking spaces to the benefit of the office used to the north. And this site at 5.3 acres is big enough that you only need about half that lot to be able to deliver that. So we have this kind of half of a lot left over from this overall development project that we'd like to sell and hopefully find a developer that will place it into service in some fashion. So the goal tonight is to take this parcel and really cut it in half into two parcels, one which we will retain for the parking use. Just a closer look at what's there today. There was a, in 2020, a portion of the lot was just kind of repaved and re-curbed to allow for what was, what is currently 292 spaces, which is actually more than the 265 we need. And then the eastern portion of the lot is just blocked off and has not been in use. And going forward here, we don't really need the full 292, so that yellow line doesn't really represent where we're dividing it. It's actually a little bit to the west. There are three specific things we are asking approval for that are needed to achieve the subdivision. The first is the preliminary and final plat of subdivision to divide the parcel into Lot 1, the western portion, and Lot 2, the eastern portion. Number two, amended site and landscape plans for Lot 1, which is the piece that we will retain and will continue as surface parking. And then three, an alternate arrangement for side and rear lot screening and landscaping, which is provided for in the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to get out of the way here and let Zach walk through some more details here on the subdivision.
Thanks, Eric. Pleasure speaking with you tonight. So talking through a couple of our different approvals here, we'll start with the subdivision of the property. A little bit of an overview for you guys again, we're dividing it into two separate lots. The western lot, which we're calling Lot 1, is going to be maintained and owned by Ryan Companies to fulfill that 265 stall parking requirement. And on the eastern lot, which we're calling Lot 2, that's going to be marketed for future development of the site. You can see there's an area of table breakdown there for kind of the rough estimate of acreage on both lots. So again, with the approval of the preliminary and final plat, again, this current, this current lot is oversized. We only need about 265 stalls, and we're almost at 300, so we have a little bit extra space. And the lot split ultimately provides flexibility for the Village of Westmont and for the aesthetic of the area as well. You'd be providing more marketable land that could be used for future development. So a little bit more technically, we are providing some different easements per the direction of the village staff. I won't walk through these in too much detail. The primary one is a 10-foot proposed sidewalk easement requested by the village, and we're providing that for the, for the future use and for a future potential sidewalk on the south side of Oakmont Lane. The primary infrastructure improvement is an addition of a sanitary sewer connection to the, to the trunk main below Pasquenelli Drive. This is primarily planned to be maintained within the entire right-of-way, so nothing on private property outside of the connection to Lot 2 or the 701 parcel. Again, this is going to be an eight-inch main currently, and again, it's going to be within the entire right-of-way, something that's going to really help the future Lot 2 development as well and is required by the subdivision. Again, there are a few different trees within the right-of-way. We've been in contact with the village and coordinating a potential fee in lieu for the, for the, for the potential trees that'd be impacted, and we'll do what we can to mitigate that impact. Second approval that we're looking for tonight is within the Lot 1 site and landscape plans. Again, working with various engineers and different people. Again, back in 2018, the village did approve the landscape plans for all three lots of the subdivision, so the 700, 701, and the 750 Oakmont Lane parcels. We're requesting to amend the previously approved landscape plans and site plans for the 701 parcel. Updated plans for Lot 2 are going to be submitted at a later date once we have a future development on site. Little bit of an engineering outline, again, I won't get into the weeds too much. Overall stormwater management is being mitigated under the current, the current use is a large retention pond just to the northeast of where the site is located. We're planning to just try to keep all of the stormwater on Lot 1 and all of the stormwater on Lot 2, which is reflected in some of the engineering plans as well. Happy to go into more detail with that as well, if that's required. The other piece, too, is there's some existing light poles on site. The good news is we've completed a high-level phonometric plan under the current stipulations and where those light poles are located within Lot 1. There's no need to, no need to remove or, you know, adjust any of the light poles. They're good in their current locations. Then touching on some of the landscape items as well, we are providing a five-foot landscape buffer between the eastern property line, the new proposed property line. The village code only requires four feet. We are, we are approving, or we're proposing this five foot to acquire, or to accommodate an additional foot of vehicle overhang for some of these head-in parking stalls along the eastern side. The trees on site within Lot 1, those are going to remain with the approved landscape plan back in 2018, so we're not proposing to remove any trees. And under the current code requirements, we are maintaining a sufficient amount of internal landscape trees for our parking. So I'm going to hand it over to Betsy here to talk about our last approval item. Thank you.
Just briefly touching on one minor point in the zoning code related to the side and rear perimeter screening. I understand you're going through a comprehensive update to your zoning code, but there is a current requirement under the code that the side and rear lots be screened with a four-foot screening wall or fence, or that an alternative arrangement for screening be provided. So the property was planned with site and landscape design in 2018. We're really not planning or proposing to change the existing landscaping as Zach was describing with the subdivision, but we are creating that new side lot line between the two lots. So we're proposing to include the five-foot landscape buffer and then keep the existing mature screening on the other side and rear lot lines as an alternative arrangement rather than a screening wall or fence. If we were to put a wall between the two lots, that would diminish the ability for cross-access when that eastern lot is developed for a future user. We'd like to maintain that cross-access so that that shared parking area could potentially serve that building in the future and allow for a creative and flexible site design for the new user. And then the existing mature screening on the perimeter lot lines has been sufficient, and there's no change to the use or character of the lot, so we're proposing to maintain that existing landscape design that was previously approved. And also, that is consistent with the character of the area, with the adjacent office uses, and then the high school use to the south. The lots around this property include landscape screening, but not necessarily a wall or fence between those lot lines. Here are a few current photographs of what that existing perimeter screening looks like. On the top left is the north lot line, which is what faces out towards the public right-of-way. There is a, there is berming in that area and mature parkway trees. On the south side, there's dense existing landscaping, and that's the line between this property and the high school to the south, as well as the future water tower property, which is owned by the village. And then on the bottom, looking west, towards our neighbor and adjacent office building, again, there's a berm there with existing landscaping that we would propose to keep. So just to wrap up, the three items that we're asking for you to recommend approval of tonight are both preliminary and final plats of subdivision to accomplish that two-lot division, to allow for a future development of the eastern portion of the site, the amended site and landscape plans to reflect the enhancements that we plan to make to the existing parking area and the separation of the two parcels with buffering in between, and then, again, an alternative arrangement for the perimeter screening that doesn't require walls or fences but relies on landscaping. And we are happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have staff comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. So 701 Oakmont Lane, as Ryan Company already discussed, a lot of the points I was going to make, so I'll be pretty quick here. 701 Oakmont Lane is located in our OR district, our Office Research District. This particular property serves the parking needs to 700 and 750 Oakmont Lane, and obviously, we already heard that they have some restrictions within their lease agreement with the occupant on that property to keep some of these spaces. Their requests are first for a preliminary plat of subdivision to subdivide the one lot into the two lots and a site and landscape plan approval. So for some of my newer commissioners who haven't been accustomed to subdivision requirements, this commission looks at preliminary plats or preliminary plans before the final plat goes to the village board for final approval and then ultimately for recording of the document at the county, which creates the new lot. So under the purview of this commission, we look to make sure that the standards are being met for that. Secondly, the site and landscape plan for the property is required because they're adjusting the existing parking lot. The parking lot changes are from an approval from 2018, from a site and landscape approval that was from 2018. The adjustments are pretty minor in nature, but we want to make sure that if that other, the other property, the newly created second lot ever develops, there's some opportunity for cross-access to this parking lot if needed in the future. So the, the landscape arrangement on the border between the new property line that they're requesting be, not be screened by fence, it's not a variance request, it's just an alternate arrangement. And if you approve the site and landscape plan, that would be a recommendation for that arrangement. Regarding the new properties being created, the two lots, they meet all the minimum standards within the zoning ordinance and the Land Development Code with size and area and the required improvements, as noted by the requirement for the new sanitary line and the removal and replacement of some of the trees or cash-in lieu. The new parking lot design related to the site plan does remove some of these, the spaces that were previously in the approved plan, obviously because they're making the site smaller than it currently is. So there is a reduction of about 26 spaces. They're still meeting the minimum requirement for the office complex in the north per their approved plans. So they don't have any, there's no request for a variance to the minimum parking standards for the office uses. So they're meeting that requirement. Generally, they are in compliance with the village requirements of zoning and Land Development Code. I'm happy to answer any questions on, on the specifics, but their team discussed a lot already.
Okay. Thank you.
And on the west side of the existing parking lot, there's, Ryan Companies granted an easement to the village for access to the portion of the high school property that the village now owns where they're putting a new water tower. And I guess I just ask that nothing in this creation of the new lot in any way impacts that existing easement, right?
That's right. And the easement is reflected on the subdivision plat. It may be a little difficult, if you have it on your screens, but it's just on that western side, shows a 20-foot, 24-foot, pardon me, easement, which would provide access, yes, from the street to that water tower site.
And if I can add that, we just reconfirmed that agreement, that easement, and I believe Zach picked it up recently.
It's still here. If I can grab it on the way out of there.
There you go. We got to get it.
Another time.
To get it recorded.
To get it recorded because it wasn't recorded. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. That was Mr. Zemanek, a village attorney. Anyone from the public? I'd like to address the commission on this agenda item. Seeing none, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Sharp, would you like to start?
Okay. Yes. I was hoping that I could ask staff, just to refresh my memory, on any zoning applications that we should, as a commission, should be aware of when it comes to shared parking or off-site parking regulations? Is there anything that we need to pay attention to as we review these kinds of proposals?
If there were a shared parking, there is no shared parking on this particular site. So I did hear, and I was very happy to hear, the petitioners say that there is opportunity for this new lot that's being created. There might be shared or cross-parking access opportunity. If that developed and that was part of that development, then we would scrutinize that agreement with this lot at that time.
Okay.
And to add, the agreement usually has to be recorded against the property, both properties.
And I believe, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, the 265 spaces are the spaces that Ryan obligated to the tenant. That wasn't the village's requirement. They meet all the parking requirements on their own north lot. They just, I was here in 2018, I think you were here in 2018, when they did the original, kind of split the, the big building into two smaller buildings. They always anticipated that a third building would get built down here. I think they just didn't know the division of land that was going to happen as time progressed, so.
So the onus of keeping that obligation of providing parking is whoever owns this piece of land has to provide that.
Yes, I believe so. You can correct me.
Yes, that's right. There is a covenant recorded against the property that was put in place when the office buildings were redeveloped, which requires that 265 spaces be provided on, on the property that we're talking about tonight for the benefit of the tenants of those buildings to the north. Here, so the 700 Oakmont Lane and 750 Oakmont Lane, in the past, that was one large office building. In 2018, it was redeveloped to two separate office buildings, and then that southern property was used essentially as overflow parking for the benefit of those tenants. We're just proposing to have a more efficient layout that allows that obligation to the tenants to be met while then allowing development to go forward on the eastern half of the site.
Okay. Thank you. The only other comment that I will bring up is the landscape plan shows, L100 shows on Lot 1, the eastern side, shows new planting along that five-foot setback between the parking stall and the proposed property line. However, Lot 2, on its western side, the opposite side of the line, does not show any landscaping. And I would expect that there should be some, if that's going to be a stand, truly a standalone property, that it should receive the same care and requirements.
The 701 Oakmont is for the site plan, so lot, I think it's the westernmost lot, has the site plan approval tonight. The newly created lot to the west doesn't, so they would have to come in for approval once they have, obviously, a developer, and they, they would have to put the money and the time into the landscape plan for that.
It seems strange to me that you can sell off part of your property and you don't have to care about how it looks in the meantime or how it performs to code in the meantime. Is that, do you guys understand what I'm saying? Like, how, how is it performing between now and when, if it ever actually gets sold and becomes something other than a parking lot? Because right now, it's a parking lot, and we're dividing it into two, and we're saying one parking lot doesn't need to perform as a parking lot.
I will note, in the 2018 approvals, we allowed them to not improve a part of this 701 Oakmont. So if you look at the aerial, you can see it has the old parking lot that was there from the original construction. Normally, we would have a developer, if they were to remove anything on site, they would have to seed it, and it would just become grass in the meantime.
Yeah.
But due to those approvals, we did not require that at the time.
Okay. I think just to, I'll hear the opinion of other commissioners, but to make my, my argument more clear, if there was no drive aisle into this Lot 2, we would require that a drive aisle be provided if this is going to be subdivided, right? Or would we not? In, in similar fashion with the landscaping plan approval, I would think that it needs to be done together. But I also understand the functionality of waiting until someone buys it and decides what to do with it as well. But I also have seen a lot of projects that didn't go anywhere or didn't go anywhere in the timeline that we anticipated as a commission, so. That's, that's my only comment on this plan. Other than that, I am okay with it, and I also like the idea of, in the future, being able to utilize shared parking for two projects.
Thank you. Commissioner Craig?
No, I like it the way it's presented, and I like the shared parking also. I like that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay. Commissioner Lynn, your turn.
Yeah. This might go on Commissioner Sharp's comment about the drive aisle. Maybe this is what, maybe it was, maybe I'm just not familiar with the term drive aisle, but yeah, I was wondering, does the parking lot, the new, the new parking lot to the east, Lot 2, does that, does that require a second entrance from the, from the street now that it's its own parking lot? Now, I understand the same argument, and maybe that's what you were talking about when you were saying drive aisle. I also understand the argument that we'll wait till a developer, like, acquires a lot in order to improve it. But anyway, maybe my question is, does Westmont require two means of entrances and to a parking lot?
No, we do not require it. Generally, if there's a design aspect where it's popular, it makes sense, then yes. I do want to clarify that the proposal tonight with Ryan Companies' project, they are separating the parking lots out. So there'll be a new parking lot, which is basically what they've already improved, and then the western or eastern parking lot that's currently there, they are planning on selling that property to be redeveloped entirely.
Right. Yeah. Another, another thought I had was with 700 Oakmont and 750 Oakmont is, were there, were there changes in use to those buildings that were, allow, allow them to make 265, to, to come down to 265 parking lots? Or was it always at, say, from even when the, as office buildings, like, with the office use, is it, are 265 spaces required? Or is there, since, since the time the building was built, were there other functions that went in there that were, allowed them to come, to bring down their reductions and, to, do you know what I mean?
So the 265 spaces that they're referencing is related to a lease agreement with the office that's in there, not related to our code requirements.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. Our code requirements, they actually meet our code requirements for the two buildings that are there just on the north. So the 265 that they're speaking, that's not our requirement that they had to have that.
Got it.
Now, if we are able to do our zoning ordinance amendments that we're, we're still working on, I'm not quite sure if we reduce the office requirement, but in general, we don't dissect every office, every use that's in the building itself. It's just a flat, whatever the office requirement was at the time. We did parking analyses on everything before they split the big building that used to be there. They just anticipated that there would be development on this south lot. They knew they at least wanted to keep half of the parking. And as you can see, that's represented, they kind of have let the other half of that parking lot degrade. And I don't think we have a good measure for what to do with it as it degrades. Probably what will happen is if it gets to a point that they don't want to pave it, code enforcement's going to go and say, well, then you probably have to pull it out and just overseed it, just like any other pre-developed lot that is not, you know, developed. We hope it doesn't get to that point, probably, is the best I can answer on that one.
And then, thank you. Another question is, how do you plan to keep the stormwater on, on each lot? Like, how's that done?
Yes, let me explain. End it here. So currently, stormwater is all collected. There's an easement, a drainage easement along the southern edge of the whole, excuse me, the whole 701 property. Going back to here, you can see on some of this, at the very bottom, there's an easement that runs sort of along the whole property, cuts up in the corner, and then discharges to the retention pond that's just northeast that is on, that is on the 750 Oakmont parcel. So that stormwater pond in direction with some of the, with the village staff and the village engineer is sized appropriately for 701 Oakmont Lane, barring any impervious increase. And our, our project, the 701 lot specifically with the land improvements, is proposing a reduction in impervious area, so that's good for stormwater. And then in addition, we are, there's an existing storm line that runs kind of along the north, right, kind of right through the north of the, of the Lot 1 property. We're basically going to add a manhole and intercept We're basically going to add a manhole and intercept that and run it south to tie into that line along the south. It already ties into that line further east, but we're just going to redirect it slightly so that it, it ties in upstream of where it currently does. So that's helpful from a Lot 1 standpoint to keep all of the stormwater within Lot 1, and then all of the stormwater within Lot 2, as they're discharging to the same place, but they're doing so independent of one another.
Yeah, so that, so that one lot doesn't require to flow into the next lot's manhole, right?
Correct.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what the, sorry, thank you very much for the answer. But, and then there was the four-foot screening, like, looking at it, almost looks like it'd be better without the four-foot screening. So, and maybe, can, can you, can you explain, well, was that the, there was, that was just an intent a long time ago, that it was thought to be more aesthetic to have a four-foot screening?
Yes, so the code reads as if every lot doesn't have cross-access. And the code in the parking design regulations indicates that a screening of some kind, four-foot, could be a wall, could be a fence, something, is required unless they provide an alternate, alternate arrangement. In this case, they're providing an alternate arrangement that we're comfortable with because of the opportunity for development on that site and the cross-access.
If I can just, so our code's always been a little bit broken, that's why we're going through a comprehensive kind of revision of it. Formally, it says that requirement even exists between two commercial properties, or two of similar zoning properties, which most organizations don't require that. So if you've ever been to Wendy's and wondered why there's a fence around the outside of Wendy's, even though right next door is commercial, it's because that was the, the requirement, is that there should be a fence there. But if you look at more modern times, 63rd and Cass, we have Freddy's, we have the other restaurant that's there, we did not require fencing between those lots because it's all a commercial development. It's all commercial next to commercial, next to commercial. And that fencing requirement didn't seem to fit very well. So I believe that's why they're not, they don't want to do a fence here because it's going to be similar uses. And that's, it's one of the things that we're correcting in the new zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
That head mic?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Simpson, what's a yeet?
I'm familiar with the site. I drive past it every day over at Krem, so I think it's a great opportunity. I think we're going to get development. Scott, the only question I have kind of relates to the agreement, I think 2018, they don't have to do anything under the 2018 agreement. Was there any type of expiration date or deadline where, when this timeline does hit, they would have to do something so it doesn't get to the point where code would have to?
No, there's very little mention in those approvals regarding this particular property. There was a lot of difficulty at the time, just because of how big of a project it was.
Sure.
There's more focus on the actual building being divided into two than on this property because it was all a parking lot beforehand anyway. A lot of times, there's what we call land banking. And land banking basically means they might have been saving it for if they needed extra parking in the future. Obviously, they don't need that, so.
I, I believe, from my memory, they showed a conceptual office building that was sitting there. The presumption was is that parking lot was there at the time, it was in decent condition, that it wasn't changing. And then I think at a later time, they decided to kind, kind of put the investment in half the parking lot and then not in the other half, knowing that something was coming. I don't know that we ever formally sat down around the table and said, "What's going to happen if that, that side of it degrades to a certain point?" In a perfect world, we'd say, "Well, you got to restore the parking lot." So this change does kind of make the parking lot somewhat unusable, the way it sits, and so we'll probably have to tackle that through maintenance at the time as the best maintenance that's suitable for what's happening, so.
Sure. Just of the applicant, are you guys planning to imminent, like, is the goal to get it sold? Is that what's trying, driving the subdivision here?
Yeah, we are in the process of marketing the property for sale. We've tried to develop it for, over the last several years, and, you know, it's a difficult time for office use, and we can go into that, but, you know, I think there are users that would potentially find an opportunity to develop that site. It's a little small for us and for our company. It's not, it doesn't really fit one of our strategies based on the small acreage, but there could be an owner-user situation, a business, there's all kinds of things that could want to go there if we get this subdivision done. So having the subdivision complete just allows the marketing of the, of the property be a little cleaner, there's fewer question marks for the buyer, wondering, "What's the process? How long?", that kind of thing. And we've had some interest. We had one group that put it on our contract, we weren't able to consummate that transaction. But it's hard to say the timeline of when. We have maintained the landscaping through, like we do for the rest of the park. You can tell from the aerial that the asphalt paving itself is getting kind of old. We're not, it's not like there's a ton of stuff growing up, and then we do have it blocked off, it's not actively used for parking. I think we've had the fire department use it occasionally for some test things of their vehicles, or I don't know what they, they did. But in any case, it does sit there, it's not the prettiest thing in the world, but the berm and the landscape and the mature landscape, we do maintain that like we do with the rest of the business park there. So it's not an eyesore per se, it's not a great use of the land as it sits, but we'd love to, we'd love to place it into service. We don't really have an interest at this point in land banking or hanging on to it any longer for our own use.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, I drive past it all the time. You guys have a beautiful frontage there as well. You have more parking, it sounds like, than code requires, so I think that makes you guys a good neighbor, so I would overwhelmingly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have nothing to add. You did a great job on the north side of Oakmont Lane there, and. Any further questions, comments, commissioners? Then, under PCC 002, 2025, this request from Ryan Companies for the property at 701 Oakmont Lane. First item, preliminary plot of subdivision to subdivide one lot into two lots in the OR district. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Simpson?
Second.
Madam Secretary? Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, and second agenda item, the site and landscaping plan approval. Motion? No move. Thomas?
Second. Simpson?
Second, Simpson. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, there you have it. It'll be notified by staff when, when the village board has you scheduled. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it.
Our second item under new business is PCC 004, 2025, a request from HTW Limited Liability Company for the property at 801 North Cass Avenue for the following, a site and landscaping plan approval. Who would like to, I see three of you there, gentlemen, you're arm wrestling over.
So our project involves.
Your name and.
I'm sorry. John Benoit, I'm the principal of BE Architects. Our, our project involves 801 North Cass. We're seeking to make improvements to the overall function of the building. We're looking to add a generator to provide additional life safety usage for the building. And in doing so, we're modifying the, the landscape plan and the site plan in general. So we're, we're going to modify the parking lot and take over a few parking spots to add this generator. And in doing so, we're going to reconfigure the parking, restripe the parking lot, and make a number of landscape improvements to the site as well as required by the village.
So essentially, we're, we're adding a generator on, on this side of the parking lot, so we're, we're removing a stall, and in doing so, we, we obviously lose the parking there. So we are restriping the lot to, to make up for that loss. And then in addition, on the north side of the property, we are now adding an additional landscape buffer as is currently required. The, the generator is going to be screened as required per code, and, and the parking lot and the striping, again, also all complies with, with current requirements.
Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So 801 North Cass, it's north of Ogden Avenue. The property is largely a medical office. I believe Dooley is the prime tenant in that building. The property is located in the OR district, Office Research District. It borders on the manufacturing district near Ty Warner Park. The request tonight is for just a site and landscape plan approval for the emergency generator that they're proposing. In many cases, and in many other communities, this is normally just a permit and not go, does not go through the site and landscape plan process. So this is kind of an extra step that we have because our code is very strict and states that any, any structure that is not on the approved plan must get approved. This property actually is older than a lot of the properties around it and was originally developed without an approved site or landscape plan, is before we required it at the time. So in these cases, at the staff level, it's pretty difficult to require improvements on the rest of the property that they're not touching. So we just focus on what they're improving on the property. In this case, it's just the generator. We do have requirements for screening, so there's screening on three sides, and then they're providing bollards for protection within the parking lot so there's no accidents, and accidents can be prevented. We usually have our fire department, our Fire Prevention Bureau, look at these during permitting. In this case, we had them look at it during our planning and zoning process with the site and landscape plan because they have pretty strict requirements on how these are, where they're proposed and how they're constructed, and they meet those minimum standards. Additionally, they, at the start of their project, they actually wanted it on the south end of, or on the far east end of the parking lot, so it wasn't as close to the building. Unfortunately, there's an easement on that side, so they were unable to put it, place the generator there. So this was their second option and location. Related to some of the other items that they're including in their proposal, the parking spaces that they're losing here, they're not really losing, they're restriping the property. They have a lot of ADA spaces that have two loading zones. Newer code does not require two loading zones for ADA spaces, so they're able to actually recoup the spaces that they would normally lose if they were to propose the generator where it is. Other than that, they're meeting all the minimum requirements for planning and zoning. And after, if approved, they'd have to submit for a permit, which I believe they have a permit on file, so they'd have to resubmit for a permit and then to be rereviewed by the other parties such as building and fire. I'm open to answering any questions.
Certainly. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on this agenda item? Seeing none, go to the commissioners. Commissioner Lynn, would you like to start?
No, I, just as you mentioned, I think that, to me, I mostly, this is something that should just be through, through permitting, not, not, like, through the, through the department. I don't know. I don't, I don't see any issues anyway personally.
Commissioner Simpson?
Same.
Looks good. Commissioner Sharp?
I would also second the, the opinion that this could be done through permitting only. And I don't know, I don't know if that's how the new code reads or not at the moment, the proposal for generators. My only question on this specific project is, do we know the height of the generator itself yet?
Sorry, it's Gary Moeb of BE Architects. We have a cut sheet. Do we have the cut sheet here? So we were proposing a six-foot-eight screening fence, so that, that's above what the generator height is.
Okay. I want to make sure that during permitting, I would assume that the building department would require those cut sheets to confirm that it is being screened appropriately?
Usually zoning requires it for the screening purposes.
One way or another, the cut sheet gets to the village and.
And that's, the, the elevation we provided in there shows that the, the generator is entirely covered by the screening.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other concerns about this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I'm good.
Commissioner Peterson?
No questions, no comments.
I guess when I read this, I was kind of, I know this building is over 40 years old, and it, I see it's gone 40 years without a, without a extra generator. Why now?
It actually has a generator inside the building?
Yep.
Need to hear that at the podium.
Yep, yep. So there is a current generator that's housed in the basement of the building that exhausts out through the side of the building, and it's not in great shape, requires replacement, not up to code. There's a whole bunch of problems with it, so.
Okay.
This is the safer and more effective solution.
Okay.
Trying to fix what's there.
Thank you. I certainly am supportive, and I agree that it's too bad we couldn't have just done this through permitting. Okay. Under PCC 04, 004, 2025, request from HTW for the property at 801 North Cass for the site and landscaping plan approval. Does the Chair have a motion to approve? No move. Thomas?
Second. Sharp?
Motion and second. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Are approved.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
There you have it, gentlemen. Staff will notify you when you're scheduled to go, they're going to have to go before the village board.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is, under old business, public hearing, PCC 006, 2025, request from ZZ Nails Incorporated and Richmond Station, the owner for the property at 42 South Cass, for the following, a special use permit to operate a beauty parlor located on the ground floor in the B1 Limited Business District. And if everyone remembers, this is a continuance, tonight of a public, public hearing that we held before the last meeting on the 14th of May, the petitioner was, was not here, was not present, and so we kept it open. There's been no contact since, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Adam. And therefore, I suggest, I would, I would take a motion to close the public hearing on this and remove 006, 205, 2025 from the agenda.
So moved. And also to consider this zoning application withdrawn due to, due to the lack of responsiveness.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought removing it from the agenda was doing that, so.
Yeah, let's, I guess, just clarify that for the staff, that PCC considers it withdrawn.
Good. Okay, so I have a motion, and.
You got a second?
There's a question.
Thomas?
Thomas was the second. Sharp was the motion.
Yeah.
Chairman, I have one question just real quick.
Certainly, go.
This, maybe it's for village council, this would not bar them from appearing. They don't have to do the timeout here for a year. If they want to come back in a month or two, they can, they're free to apply. It's not treated as a rejection or a denial, it's just taken off the agenda.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, they're free to reapply.
Got it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
And second item under old business. And second item under Old Business is to reopen our public hearing, PZC 001-2025, request from the Village of Westmont regarding zoning ordinance text amendments as follows. We've had previous meetings on, and this zoning ordinance text amendment is to repeal Appendix A zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinances and to establish a new Chapter 95 zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinances with comprehensive updates to the entire ordinance, including amendments to the zoning districts, development standards, planning processes, and other zoning regulations. Remember, we got all the way through Section 6 in the previous meeting, so we'll reopen and start on Section 7. Staff, do you agree?
Yes. And just to clarify for everybody in attendance, so we're in the middle of Chapter 7 or Article 7, which relates to accessory and temporary uses. The plan and goal for tonight is get through all the commissioner comments so staff can start revising language. So no new language is being proposed tonight. There will be another meeting where we propose any revised language, and the public will have an opportunity to speak at that meeting. For tonight, they might have an opportunity to speak at the end of commissioner comments. Just to clarify, the rest of the sections, or all the, the public comment that we've received has been provided to you in your packets. We have not received anything since we provided the packets to you. Obviously, you should have had time to review those comments. We look to the commissioners if they want to bring any topics up that those comments relate to. Staff has read them and took some of the recommendations. And anything that we propose from those comments, we'll let you know when we start working on the revised language and based on the commissioner comments we received tonight and from the last meeting. But there will definitely be another opportunity for the public to comment once we've revised the language at a future date. I can give you a recap of Chapter 7. I'm not going to do a full recap of the other meetings, though, just for time's sake.
But confirm, we got to Section 7 of Article 7? Is that correct?
So we got to Article 7, which is accessory and temporary uses. We kind of were bouncing around in there, so we'll start with that again, I think.
Okay.
But I can go through and just hit the key points and changes in that specific article like we did last time.
Please.
All right. So Article 7, it regulates, as I said, accessory and temporary uses. That includes accessory structures in buildings for residential and commercial properties. Accessory uses are usually the secondary use on a property, and the accessory building obviously is the secondary building of the property, so not the primary use or primary building on the property or structure on the property. Those are things like your fences and sheds. Those are accessory structures. The key changes we've made or are proposing to make in this section include the following. So residential, residential properties would now have one detached garage and two additional detached buildings at a max coverage of 1,250 square feet and a max height of 18 feet.
Because it is accessory use and structure.
We are proposing exemption for up to two small sheds, each at 12 square feet or less from both the maximum building footprint and lot coverage calculations. We are proposing non-residential properties to have accessory buildings through the special use approval process at a height of 20 feet and in compliance with the foundational landscaping We are introducing what we call ADUs or accessory dwelling units for lots occupied, occupied by a single detached house. ADUs are sometimes referred to as granny flats and usually are used for additional housing for extended family or creating affordable housing or rental income. Those regulations include a size limit at 850 square feet, and those also have design standards that would be, to be met. We're introducing electric vehicle charging equipment regulations. We're introducing and clarifying language for outdoor fireplaces, kitchens, fire pits. We're introducing an allowance for fleet vehicles on properties. We are also introducing regulations that allow for alternative and renewable energy sources, including solar, wind, and geothermal. We're clarifying relaxing regulations related to garages and carports to be within certain setbacks that they're not allowed in and allowing them to go bigger. We're clarifying regulations related to swimming pools and hot tubs. We're allowing generators to encroach into certain setbacks. We're introducing regulations that clarify allowances for donation drop boxes on commercial properties where our current code does not have any language. We're introducing regulations for exterior vending machines as well. And we're including regulations that explicitly allow for some outdoor uses, including outdoor display areas, outdoor storage areas, outdoor seating, and outdoor dining, as well as an allowance for other outdoor uses through a special use process. Hand it over to the Chair.
Okay. Commissioners, Article 7.
Should we...
I'm going to call on people individually. This is going to be a...
I can also go through the comments that we had last time from the commissioners, just in case we're repeating things, if you would like.
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So at the last, at the last meeting, when we were talking about accessory and temporary uses, we had requests from the commission to reexamine fleet and storage vehicles, so we are revisiting that. We'll be proposing revised language that clarifies some of the things we're proposing in here and likely dissecting fleet vehicles from storage of items. We are als, we, the commission also provided comments related to fencing and hot tubs to be relaxed. We also had comments related to outdoor dining regulations to be amended, which is what we'll be looking at as well, to relax them a bit from what we're proposing. And that's where we ended.
Any further comments on what section of Article 7?
I just have a question on procedure. Should we, should we be going commissioner by commissioner for the whole Article 7? Or should, should we take this one kind of part at a time, like 7.01, 7.02? I don't know. I have, I have like a dozen comments and they're all over the whole, the whole chapter. So I don't know, to have discussion about each issue, I don't know if it's helpful for me just to blurt out...
Okay.
...all things, or if we take it one step at a time?
But I'll, I'll take you through it one thing at a time and...
I think that'd be better for staff, just for note, note taking.
Yep. All right. Accessory uses and structures generally?
Mr. Chair, can I intercede?
Yes, please.
Scott, just the title, accessory and temporary uses, it seems like it's missing structures in there. So I think we probably need to have accessory structures listed in there.
Accessory structures and uses. And then the question is, does it also regulate temporary uses?
Yes. I just, I feel like the, the title, even though it addresses structures, the title kind of is a little misleading. Sorry, sorry for interlocuting. Since that was the start of the entire section, I wanted to get that in.
Well, okay. I mean, the first four sections are, you know, to do with structures, whether it was residential, non-residential, accessory, or inside setbacks. So we take all four of these at the same time.
Should I just go ahead? Can I, may I start?
Please.
So at Section 7.02, small building exemption, I have a couple of questions, a comment and a question. Number one comment, I think 12 square feet is far too small for, for, for this type of small building exception. I think like 50 square feet would be reasonable because you can go to Wayfair, Amazon, Home Depot, and buy a six-by-eight plastic shed, and people have these all over the village. And they're far greater than 12 square feet. 12 square feet is, is like three by three. It's, it's, that's a box. So I would propose something much more generous for...
I agree with that.
...a small building exemption.
Would you still propose two?
I would propose 250.
I mean, the proposal is for two, 12 foot, max of 12 square feet. You're saying one...
I'm saying 250 square feet.
You're saying two.
Two buildings, 50 square feet each, yeah.
So with the exemptions, so we get a lot of times, the reason this came about is we get a lot of, like you said, you see them all around town. So we get a lot of times where people call and ask, does that require a permit or not? Right now, it does technically. It's considered just a shed like normal. The, I, I don't know if at the staff level and code enforcement level, if they'd be comfortable with allowing it at that size without permits in particular. The, we can certainly look at doing it, but the exemption and policy right now generally is if it's one of those prefab sheds you can get at like Costco or Walmart or Home Depot. We don't normally require permits if they're under a certain size and not on a permanent foundation. So if we are instituting some type of exemption, we would want to institute, you know, permanent foundation of some kind would need a permit because it's flat work or would need to be included in lot coverage.
Interesting, yeah. And they, and those, I just happen to have built one of these within the last year, not on my property, and not in Westmont, but they, they require, they require flat foundations. So people usually install pavers or some kind of plywood substrate.
While, while the smaller ones, like the ones we are proposing here, you can, we normally just see them put on the grass near a building.
Yeah.
Or on an existing patio or near a garage.
I think I bring it up and I, I still think it's too, I think we should permit, since these things are all over the market, you can buy these anywhere, they should be permitted in the village, one through a vehicle of some kind, whether it's the zoning or building permit office that should be allowed to construct one and, or two. And I don't, you know, people like to put these in the corner of their properties. So saying that it has to have, it has to abide by these setbacks, I think really encompasses, especially small lots, from having these things at all, because exactly where you want to put it is in the corner of your property or it's out of the way. And I don't see why we, why we have to enforce keeping a setback on these small plastic sheds. And I, and it wasn't clear to me also in reading this, if the setbacks applied to this 7.02.2, small building exception, if, if they fit within that exemption, would the setbacks then not apply?
It would, they would still apply the exemptions only to the building footprint, accessory building footprint requirements, and I believe it's lot coverage and the building separation requirement.
Okay.
It would still have to be setback five feet from interior side lot lines and 10 feet from rear lot lines.
I believe the, so you're approaching it from a different viewpoint, I think, than what our consultant and staff was working on is, we, we get a lot of requests for one of two things, and that is either those small gray plastic structures that you can just fit your lawnmower into or you can fit your trash cans into that are pretty small in a footprint.
Yeah.
We didn't have anything that said, there's no rules for that. And then I don't quite want to call them lean-tos, but those real skinny sheds that people like to put up right against their house.
They're like shelves, basically.
Yeah, that basically have shelves when you open them. So what our consultant was trying to do is say, well, you're pretty stringent on the way you do your lot coverage and how you measure everything. Do you want a few exemptions for these small things that you don't seem to know how to classify very well? And so the discussion was, well, yeah, we probably do just want to be able to exempt those somehow. And the 12 square feet was what we saw some other communities doing. I think what you're talking about is you can buy a lot of these sheds, whether you get them through Home Depot or Wayfair. Our building department still wants to regulate those so they don't fly away, and so they do want them anchored in the ground or some sort of permanent, you know, permanent foundation so that they don't fly away in the storm. And 50 square feet, I agree, is pretty small. I don't know that our building department will be fully comfortable saying, well, then are we exempting them from even needing a permit from that point? Or how do we regulate a, you know, something that the zoning is saying is somewhat exempt and, but we still want to regulate for the building? So I think if you want us to, we can certainly have those conversations with them and say, are we comfortable with something bigger? At the time when we had the conversations, 12 square feet, those little structures that were there, that's what everyone that was discussing it was comfortable with. So the Wayfair 50 square feet, we would say that is a shed or an accessory building of some type, whether that's, we classify it as a greenhouse or hoop structure or whatever it may be. And that has to abide by these rules for sheds and the accessory structures.
Is there a limit, and forgive me for not already knowing this off my head, is there a limit to the number of total accessory buildings?
Yes. So in the current code, we have an allowance for one garage and a one accessory structure under a certain square footage.
So I just think, my opinion is, is too restrictive. So I, we need to permit people to have a couple of accessory-covered storage things on their, on their lot. And if I, so my, my property, I don't have one of these gray things, but I have a chicken coop. So I would not be able to have one of these on my lot, even though my lot is giant.
Well, I, I believe the new code allows, Scott?
Yeah, so new code would allow one detached garage, and this is just for residential property, one detached garage, and you can now have two additional detached accessory buildings, not structures. Chicken's coop, coop's a structure.
So I would just need to, right now, I would just need to get a permit for the Wayfair shed for the foundation.
Technically, yes.
Yes. And, and you know, Scott didn't go in depth, but garages, right now, we restrict to 576 square feet. Sheds, we restrict to 144 square feet. And one garage and one shed is all you can have. You can't have two sheds instead of a garage. You can't have two garages instead of a shed. I believe the way it reads now is that, is that one garage up to two buildings and a total of 1,250 square feet of accessory buildings. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. So if you want one garage that's 1,250 square feet, which is more than twice the size of garages we allow now, you can do that. Is that fair to say?
I believe so.
So, so I, we are trying to relax and allow more.
Yeah.
And part of that relaxation and allowing more is, well, what about these real little things that we see and we get calls on? And that's where we arrived at. Well, those, those real little things, 12 square feet, we're just saying we don't, we don't worry nearly as much about those.
Yeah.
And the building department was comfortable with saying we don't need permits for those.
Okay.
So in sum, you could have one garage, two accessory buildings, and two of these exempt sheds.
Yeah. I think, I think my opinion will still be that I would make it 250 foot. I, I don't think the idea of having a permanent foundation permitted for something that a typical homeowner is capable of building is, is just an overreach in the building department, just because it's so little. It's not regularly occupied. It's made of plastic. I don't think we would, I wouldn't, it would be onerous, I think, to make homeowners submit permits for those type of... permits for those type of foundations. I've known so many people that have made them themselves, just pavers. Anyways, let's move on. So, so that, that's my question on accessory, small buildings. Paragraph 7.03.
Is there any other discussion on this, on this same, John?
I would like to just kind of touch base similar to what Commissioner Sharp's saying, and I want to, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. It seems, what I did before when I looked online is most of these that are at Home Depot and Costco, I recognize they come in a myriad of sizes, but a lot of the common ones are six by four and seven by sevens. So that puts it anywhere from 24 square feet to 49 square feet. Are we better served getting rid of the two? They could put two up to 12 square feet each, right? Is the way we're proposing it. Is we better off just saying limited to one up to 50 square feet? Because at that point, there's not really a safety factor. And I'm thinking in my head, my child has an outdoor plastic place that made out of the same materials that these sheds do. Like that storm that hit last week, it, if it's not bolted down, it could easily go out there. So we're not necessarily containing the safety element. It's just landowners are responsible for, you know, any negligence that they would have themselves. We could recommend that they bolt it down. But my thought is for, for how accessible it is, and that shouldn't mean just because you buy it in the store, it should be a lot, but for how accessible it is and usually what you store in those sheds, it seems like the better route here would be giving one and giving a much larger space than have two that are effectively, if I need the space, it's almost going to be unusable because I only have 12 feet here and 12 feet here. And odds are if I need two, I'd prefer to knock down the wall. You know, if I have a riding lawnmower, I don't know if you could fit that in, not that, again, that might be too big as an example, but I don't think you could fit that in on a four by three. So I'm thinking that maybe the better route here is to allow one up to 50 square feet. At least that way, you know, when I looked on, online and clicked the shopping link, three out of the four would be compliant with it. Because as of right now, none of them are. That's, I just wanted to reiterate while we're on that topic.
Yeah, I get it. Both of us are saying allow one or two larger sized storage facilities.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so the exemption that's in here is exempting it from lot coverage and the overall footprint we're proposing for accessory buildings. They could always submit what you're talking about, just as a normal shed. It would just take away that one, the two accessory structures or buildings that we would allow on the property. It's not like this section is regulating the sheds per se, it's just those exemptions because we don't see, when you have a foundation, for example, on the sheds, it does impact stormwater and lot coverage purposes.
Yeah, I think most people, when they're buying this online, they're not thinking, oh, I have to go through the village and pay attention to these things. They, that's nowhere in their mind.
Because the, what we run into a lot, and the reason the provision is in here is most, a lot of properties that are 9,000 square foot properties, those downtown properties, they're either at lot coverage or exceeding. And we think that they should have some opportunity to have these sheds, even if they are at that, at that maximum for lot coverage already.
And that's a very different context than residential districts. So maybe, maybe we need to bifurcate this between residential, is this a residential lot or is this a downtown lot?
This would be for residential. When I say downtown, I mean the neighboring R3 properties are downtown.
Our core subdivision, which is the, our, basically going off from the tracks, 60 by 150 is, and 9,000 square feet is kind of the typical subdivided residential lot. As soon as you get north of Naperville or, you know, south of 55th, they kind of get a little bit different. What if, what if it was a scenario of one, like up to two, as long as the combined square footage is not more than 50 square feet?
I like that.
So if you wanted one of those. So does that, and then I think, Scott, we should probably examine if it should still be exempted from those setbacks because it does seem.
They're, they're not exempt.
Okay.
From the setbacks. They're exempt from lot coverage, the overall building footprint for accessory structures, but they still have to comply with the setbacks.
Review what you said about the word, using the word permanent. To me, permanent, you're pouring a concrete slab. I think the vast majority of these purchased buildings, they're not.
They're something less than permanent.
Permanent basis. So is that, don't we need to consider?
Well, what we, what we have right now in the code, because we thought of that, the permanent, because they, some people like to move them around. That's why we have the provision there regarding such small buildings are not placed on a permanent foundation. That's why that's included in there.
Well, do we need to define permanent foundation?
Generally, it's probably just any foundation that is, that is related to flat work.
Sorry, yeah. So when I hear permanent foundation, my first thought is something going down three foot six, like below the frost line. But it sounds like you're just talking, like which is formwork, but, or, or piers. But it sounds like you're, you're saying flat work, which is pads.
Yeah.
So, but I just raise that because just as you pointed out, is, I, when I hear permanent, permanent foundation, I'm, I'm thinking of something much bigger. And if there's a discrepancy in the, when a person's either applying or talking to the building department, I can imagine someone else thinking the same thing, that, oh, that has to go down 42 inches, so.
Yeah, we can clarify that.
Yeah, because, and I have never, sorry, I've, I've never purchased one of these sheds. I've of course seen them like everyone else. I think if they just have a treated wood, wood frame bottom, they could be laid onto the grass, right? Right?
Correct.
Right. So, and, yeah, and if it's, if they want to go the next step of doing flat work, which is just a thin concrete pad, I mean, I guess they could go for it. But I don't know if that, I don't know, I don't know if that has an effect on your coverage too. I mean, does it help coverage and the fact that, I mean, you're, you're exempting it from coverage anyway.
Yeah, if it doesn't have the, any permanent foundation, then it's, it would not be exempt.
If you amend that to say permanent foundation or concrete or similar pad, that might clarify your issue. Because if it does have a concrete pad, that's like a patio and that counts towards lot coverage typically, right?
Yeah. Again, whenever I, whenever I hear permanent foundation, I'm thinking like, like piers, like going down 42 inches.
Can we use permeable or impervious and then just?
If you're laying it down on a, something that's permeable? Because that means the grass or the dirt, you're fine. But if it's impermeable, then.
We used to be able to allow that, but in the current code, lot coverage is just any, any hardscape.
Sorry to also change the topic, but just as, with the, with the setbacks, I can understand maybe easing them a bit for the setbacks on those structures, but I wouldn't bring them down to nothing because I could just imagine someone having a chain link fence and a neighbor pushing one of those up to it, and weeds and things not being taken care of in between, like in that awkward, like in the six inches between one neighbor's, like, so your, your neighbor, your property looks great, like with like a shed that's tucked in the corner, but then your neighbor's looking at all your weeds that's coming up that's not being maintained. So I don't know if that plays into, like, I think, I think it would suggest about minimizing those setbacks. I would still want some sort of setbacks in order to make sure that your yard is maintained.
So can I just ask, because I've had two commissioners mention the setbacks now. I believe the setbacks are five and five. Is that correct, Scott?
Five and 10.
Five and 10.
10, 10 at the rear.
10 at the rear?
Yes.
What do you think is more reasonable for something that we're calling this small building, which is basically less than 50 square feet? Two feet, three feet?
Yeah, I'm thinking a lawnmower would.
Yeah, a three foot would allow maintenance access and lawn mowers to get around it. I mean, that's a good point. If you've put something up to your lot line, you can't take care of that facade.
Right.
If there's a fence, you can't spray it from, you know, these things attract mold, so you can't, you can't power wash it once you shove it up into your corner.
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I think it's five and five, I think I'm okay. Scott, go ahead.
I'd have to go 36 inches anyway, I would think.
And I have no objection to the, them staying the way the setbacks are. I mean, I'm thinking in my head too, you could potentially put the empty garbage bins, a lot of the properties have to put them in their garage if they don't have the screening. Theoretically, you could keep them out of the house now and put them in the shed when it's not garbage day. There's a possible view.
Does the fire department get into about the setbacks?
We don't consult the fire department on setbacks on something like this.
I have had, I have read other zoning ordinances where the setbacks did seem to be generated from the fire department because it was talking about melting of these plastic hazards. So it might be worth asking them.
Well, that's why we've always historically had a 10, or 10 feet between the structures. And that's why we are proposing five feet as side yards so that your neighbors and yours are never closer than 10 feet. Because as soon as you get less than 10 feet, then the fire department does have a lot to say about those being too close.
So we're proposing five foot for both the rear and the side?
Right now, I believe that for, I mean, I don't want to get confused, we're, we're talking about small buildings.
Yeah.
Which are those exemptions that would abide by the same setbacks that we require for a shed or garage, which are five feet to side yards and 10 feet to rear.
Okay. I would propose a separate.
But if we're talking about reducing those, I think we're only talking about reducing those for those small buildings that we're trying to figure out as an exemption. And what I don't have an answer to is if it is 50 square feet or less. And so if I can put all my extra paint for the house in there, does the fire department suddenly say, well, wait a minute, what are you storing in there? Is it too close to something? I could tell you that right now, our shed and garage provisions are three feet to side yards and five feet to rear. So we always have that issue if someone tries to build a garage next to someone else's garage and they're only six feet away.
Okay. I would just maybe to cap it, to put a pin on it, I would suggest the staff investigate increasing this to like 50 square feet. I think having a combined one or two up to this amount is a good solution. And I think investigating appropriate setbacks that are maybe reduced or separate from their requirements of the rest of this section might make sense. Anyone else, 702?
Anything else?
Can I ask the staff about the chicken coop? How big do they have to be before a permit is needed?
I think they have, they're, they require, I don't do, I don't, I'm not the one that decides what needs a permit or doesn't. But the chicken coops we get currently all require permits.
Oh.
I believe so.
Yeah, I do believe there is a maximum size requirement, but I believe that comes from the municipal code section on animals, if I'm correct.
It's not in zoning.
There's a number of chickens, right?
I believe there's a maximum number, which then derives a maximum area, I believe it's around six and a maximum area of 50 square feet, if my memory serves me correctly.
And.
Again, that's municipal code, that's not going to be in the draft language for the zoning ordinance.
It depends how many you have.
Thank you.
For seven, can I go to three? 703. The only thing I had there was paragraph C uses, C2 uses the words accessory buildings and accessory structures, almost as if they're synonyms, but I don't, they have separate definitions in the ordinance. So I think that's confusing when I read it and it.
Can you clarify the section? I'm sorry, I'm just noting it.
7.03, paragraph C.2. Accessory buildings are subject to compliance with principal building setback regulations, blah, blah, blah.
Versus structures.
All other accessory structures. So then it switched the term on you.
I think what it's stating, and we can clarify this, I think it is trying to make a distinction between the two. It'd probably be better served if it was a separate point.
I had, I remember having reviewed this and raising the same question, and I remember Scott kind of walking me through it, that there is a difference between an accessory building and an accessory structure. And that's why those terms were intentionally used differently. And to your point, maybe we need to separate it a little better.
We'll clarify it.
It's like the difference between four wheel drive and all wheel drive. Some people would assume they're the same, but they're not, they're not the same.
So is a chicken coop a building or a structure?
It's a building. I don't know. Anyone else, 703? Comments on 703? That's all I have.
Okay, let's move on to ADUs.
Are we, did we go through 7.04?
Yes, I have comments.
That's our encroachment table.
I have comments on that one.
What's that?
704 lists site, setback restrictions for clotheslines that I don't support.
Yeah, I think that's from the old code, the existing code, I should say.
I'd like to see more clotheslines. I just don't see why we need to regulate them. Fireplace or grill, freestanding masonry, this is number 21.
Can you say the number?
The number of clothesline is 13.
13.
Other people might have, you know, please speak up with your opinions. I don't think we need to regulate clotheslines. I have questions on fireplaces and grills, but I'll get to those in a different section. Number 22 regards firewood. I see from what we deleted that we used to have a lot of language, a full sentence or two on firewood, and now we've reduced it down to firewood cannot exceed four feet in height. And I question whether we need to even regulate that.
I remember we've actually had code violation cases for people with kind of piles of firewood strewn about. And the provision was they had to be neatly stacked so that there doesn't create an aesthetic eyesore for, for neighbors, et cetera. And now the stacking requirements removed.
It would still be stacked. So if you read it, it's still a stack, it just doesn't say the rest of it. We felt that was clear enough.
A firewood stack.
A stack is underlined, okay.
So if it's everywhere on the property, which we, I do recall, I've been, I've seen that before.
Yeah.
It just has to be a stack, it can, it'd probably be a nuisance thing related if it was everywhere, just like litter.
It's a process when you take, I've taken down trees on my property and when you, maybe that wasn't legal, I don't know. But when you, when you chop up that wood, it takes a while to stack it.
The other reason, just so you know that provision's in there, is because I have seen it before where people use them as, kind of like a fence to separate their properties. That's when it becomes an issue. And that we've, I've seen complaints come in for that before.
I actually believe that's why the existing language was placed, because we had someone doing like a 10 foot, to get around the fence regulations, they did 10 feet of firewood between them and their neighbors. And then it was starting to become a safety hazard. And so staff at the time, you know, went and said, well, we need to regulate where it is and how tall it is and how it's stacked.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't, I won't push that one too much. As long as we don't, you know, it's a nuisance to enforce something that's four foot, six inches taller, right? No one's going to do that. Okay, I don't have any comments on this list.
For number, number 11, there is a bay window. Like, I'm, I'm a fan of getting any opportunity to make like houses bigger or whatever, but I'm kind of surprised that you could, can you project that bay window into the side yard setback? So if they're at five feet, you could go much smaller than that?
There's no underside yet.
Normally, I'm a fan of allowing as many encroachments as possible, but I'm just kind of surprised to see that, that the, that a bay window could project into, say, a five foot yard side, side yard setback.
Yeah, I know where we did at the staff level, agree to look into bay windows in particular again. So we are going to probably revisit it when we come back with revised language.
And then is there, something comes up a lot of times in projects is the, like a basement window well? I, I didn't see it in there, is there, maybe if you could tell me what number that is? And then.
52.
52?
Window well. Window wells?
Okay, nice. So you could project three feet into the?
Yeah, it can't just, it has to be five feet from the property line. And that's largely because we have easements that run five feet into the property. So you don't want those placed in easements because we wouldn't allow it.
This is consistent with what's currently in the zoning ordinance, too. These window wall regulations.
Let me see. The, I think it would say the village of La Grange Park that would allow a window well to project as long as that there's at least three feet remaining so that it could be used, so that the side yard, people could walk like from the front to the backyard, that there's at least three or four feet there. Let me see. Like, touching on the, I understand that there's an easement there and that you shouldn't go then into an easement. I can't help but wonder, it's like, do we, is every, when a, when a new building, new home is being built, it's still required, is it for, for the developer or the homeowner or whomever to deed over an easement over to the, to the village? Is it?
I don't believe so. We require it with subdivisions, I believe. I don't know if we require it with new, single-family homes.
We do.
We do.
Yes.
Five feet on each side and then 10 feet in the rear, I believe. And that's just, I don't think, I think it's deed it over because it's an existing easement is recorded against the property.
I don't think that there was an existing easement. It was just, right, that it's a, that a new homeowner or developer has to grant, grant the easement over to the village, I believe, right?
I don't believe, I believe it's part of the, perhaps the engineering codes, but basically it says if you're building a new house, you need to provide the easements at that time. So it is not necessarily tied to subdivision.
And they've recorded an easement and it has the magic easement language that's for the benefit of the village for stormwater drain, its utilities.
Right. Is that unique to Westmont or is that another? I just hadn't heard of that in other villages.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, I don't have that answer because that's actually not a zoning code. I just know that the building and engineering has always done that as part of the new houses. So we'd have to research that to have that answer.
But the window wells, that's why that's there, is because they can spend.
Thank you.
Okay, good discussion. ADUs. 705.
Well, how do you differentiate for ADUs if they're not adding square footage, if they're redoing the interior? How do you differentiate between taking out a permit for interior alterations versus taking out a permit for ADUs? Or does it not make a difference?
That will be something we will, if this is implemented, we'll have to, at the staff level, figure out. Zoning would review likely more interior alterations in some way to make sure if it is an ADU, if they're separating it, it's caught and we can make sure they're in the regulations. I think generally it won't be a huge issue, but that's definitely something we'll have to work through when and if we see one come through as the proposed language.
Because I can see some people not wanting to call it an ADU and just, you know, submitting permits for interior alterations. And technically, the village wouldn't know the difference.
Well, my understanding is they'd have to submit plans as to what they're doing. And if.
Right.
There's a bedroom and water and kitchen facilities or, you know, whatever they put in there, we would see that and flag it as an ADU and not just a storage room.
Let me see. I tried to do, I did just a very quick drawing of like what would, like, an ADU would be like a detached, like a, kind of like the granny flat, as you mentioned, or so not, not in the primary residence, but detached one.
Detached.
I couldn't help but think that the codes are almost not, I almost felt like it was just making it look like a shed, that it wasn't that much more nicer than a shed from the exterior. But, and I especially didn't care for the seven-foot maximum for the basement ceiling height.
Why?
Because I could kind of understand that, that idea of like a seven-foot maximum for like maybe an upper level, that maybe to try to kind of, to rein in on the bulk of the building visually from the outside. But when it comes to a basement and you put a maximum of seven feet, just keep in mind is that there's, there's ducting, there's sometimes, there could be seal beams or dropped headers that are bringing, like, so parts of it would be down to six feet. People, if they're going to be building like a new ADU, like, because this isn't an existing building, this would be, there'll be new ADU buildings, then you're most, just for, I don't know what benefit to the village it would be for, for someone to be living in a kind of a place where they're bumping their heads on it. It almost feels like we're, it's, like, it's not, I mean, I wouldn't say squalid conditions, but I mean, it's why, like, you're, like, I almost don't understand the benefit to the village to be able to say, oh, we got them to seven feet when they could have had eight feet. I mean, what difference would that have been?
I think, I think.
Go for it.
When we had our consultant looking at everything, I think some of these regulations that we pulled from other communities that do have ADUs in, in this area, it's very limited on the communities that allow ADUs in general. I think it is to deter having additional space in the basement to be rented out.
In the basement of the ADU in addition to the ADU itself?
Just the ADU basement. I think that's why that provision's in there.
Part of the language about ADUs is that we're trying to welcome different financial models and, and arrangements. So I agree with Commissioner Lynn. I don't know why we should impose a limit on how far down they can dig.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that's where that came from. I think the thing to note is there's a lot of communities in Deepwater County don't allow ADUs or don't explicitly allow them. We will kind of be the trendsetter in this area for allowing them. So we take a very conservative approach with the regulations. We aren't necessarily looking at promoting them, we are just allowing them as of now, if that makes sense. So there's other communities, I believe Evanston is one of them, that promotes them. They have three or four designs that are what they call pre-permitted. So they have already gone through the whole process of designing the ones they want in their town. We are not doing that at this point, we're just giving the property owners the rights to at least submit at a conservative rate. We can always go back as we do, we did with the 1979 code, we can always go back and make amendments if we're not, if we're seeing like a lot of variances or the code just not working well. We'll have a maintenance period, I'm sure.
So I got two architects here, so I'm relying on two of you. I don't think, there's nothing that says that it can't be deeper than seven feet. I think what it's just saying is that if you have uninhabitable space for like the utilities or whatever, it's excluded from the square footage of that 850 square foot maximum. So you can still have a basement that is habitable, but we're going to include it in that square footage of that 800 square foot, 850 square foot max. So it's not that it's limiting that, it's just it's saying that if you're building out space for your utilities, that is not considered habitable living space. And I, the reason I say habitable for everyone else is you can only habitate in the attic if you have so much clearance. And I assume that seven foot is coming from that. So basically, I think what the exception here is, is not that you can't build a basement that is habitable. It's that if it's less than seven feet, we don't consider that living space and therefore we wouldn't count it against that 850 square foot maximum. Does that, to my architects, is that, am I translating that like smartly or no?
No, it is.
What you just said makes sense. I just don't know if it reads.
But, but if they're, if they're putting money into like a new, it's a little building, but it's, it's still money going into it. The, that seven-foot space of like whatever the footprint is, it's not going to be all mechanical, right? Mechanical might only be about three or four feet, like by five or six feet. So, but that, in a way, you're almost encouraging people to, to say, well, if I just make it seven feet, now I could, now I could hang out down there. Yeah, I'm going to be bumping my heads at, like, whenever I'm passing a header or what. But by, by having that rule, I almost think that you're almost encouraging people to, like, to make the money, to get their bucks worth for the, for the building that they're doing. Whereas even for mechanical equipment, I mean, why, why, I mean, why have it at seven foot? You just, just not have a height rule for the basement? I would, I almost don't, because the people have to pay for, they have to put good money in for like a little building. They're going to try to make it worth for themselves every square foot they could get, just like anyone, whether it's a house or a little building or what. And, and just by, by that rule in a, in a roundabout way is kind of encouraging people to, to live in low ceiling height spaces. Do, do you see what I mean?
I understand what you're saying, but I thought, and maybe this is a wrong thought, I thought that the building department didn't allow habitable spaces that were that low. So if I built some.
They don't.
So.
So the exemption here is stating that when you just have in the basement mechanical equipment, we're not going to take that away from your overall square footage for the rest of the ADU.
I think we just need to change the dimension because seven foot is livable. And so I could say, I'm going to build a seven-foot basement and just live with that nuisance in order to get the space as occupied space. Versus me saying, well, if the rule was four feet or something like a real underfloor system needs something much less, then I'm not going to try to live in that, obviously. So I think Commissioner Lynn's point is correct, that you're just going to end up with cheap people like me who are going to live in a seven-foot basement.
But what if we, what if we just said we exempt the mechanical areas?
Yeah.
So you're, you're not counting the mechanical areas against the square footage of the 850 square feet. So whether it's four feet.
Why shouldn't we allow them a basement anyway? Why shouldn't we allow them a full use of a basement under that? Because if we're caring about bulk standards above ground.
I think we are allowing, the way it reads is we are allowing them to have basements, it's just we're exempting the smaller ones to not be included in the ADU.
Okay, so I would change the small one to be like 30 inches or something more reasonable. That's really just a crawl space.
We can look into it and see, talk with building and make sure we're being coherent with that section.
Because what you're talking about is crawl space, I think.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, I just hope, I hope I didn't make it worse where now they're only allowed to do crawl spaces, but.
The exempt, it's, it's based on the exemption to the square footage, so we'll just, we'll reexamine it and probably propose either clearer language or a reduction or something.
I'm also just thinking though, it's like at 850 square feet, that, that's kind of small, it'd be nice to be able to, a person to be able to double that and be able to get it almost to 1600 square feet, 1600 square feet when you, when you include a basement, but then that's at a low ceiling height. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure.
So are you stating you want larger ADUs?
Kind of, yeah.
Can I open that for discussion to everybody else? Because that's a big change in what I would be looking at.
850 square feet, just so everyone knows, is 30 by 30, square root.
Even less. Is, and is it lot coverage a consideration? That's, that's why this 850 was, was arrived at?
Lot coverage probably has its separate metric, right?
Yeah, so lot, lot coverage, every, anything that's hardscaped. This ADU would be included in what we call the accessory building footprints for overall. So it would be one of your accessory buildings on your property.
There's, um.
Even if it's connected, it's still an.
If it's not connected.
If it's connected, it's still an ADU or?
Yeah, it's still, it would still have to have the provisions that listed for attached ADUs in particular. But it would not be included in the accessory building footprint. It would still be included in lot coverage no matter what.
So it'd be pretty hard to have an ADU and a garage.
It could be.
And most people have garages.
We have several limiting factors for what can be done on a property. We're expecting if we do get any ADUs, it'd be on larger properties that can accommodate it. But it would be, you'd be subtracting it from the overall accessory building footprint. But if we want that to be changed, we can look at that as well.
But I don't, I don't think any sized lot can accommodate a garage and an AUD or ADU, sorry, a 1250 maximum for both.
Yeah, and we can reexamine the 1250 related to ADUs if we want to.
Just, just for, if it helps to, for a reference, like there's, is it, what I think is a kind of a cute-looking ADU already in the village, which is on, on Grant and Dallas, on the corner of Grant and Dallas, that, like, it's at the back of the property. When you walk past it, it's done in such a way, you almost don't even think it's an ADU, but, but then you realize it is in the backyard of the corner house. And the, the roof height, which I've been meaning to get a laser measure and check it, but I, I would think that it's more than 18 feet. And I think it has like a nice cute look to it. So that I think is, whereas I was, I was kind of drawn up on a computer one time trying to do an ADU based on the, the numbers that, that were kind of given, trying to think like a person would want to maximize as many square feet as they could get type of thing, which is what every homeowner wants to do. But that, it just ended up looking like a shed. And I thought it doesn't have kind of the appeal that, or like kind of what I think the village would imagine when they think of a granny flat or a coach house, that it didn't, to me, to me, the existing example on Dallas and Grant almost looked like it was a better example of a, of a, of a coach house.
I think if we allow the height to be increased on these, we'd have to look at increasing setbacks. Because you have to remember if you're a neighbor property, there's going to be an impact if you have somebody living near your property line that would normally be a garage or a shed of some kind.
So, so I believe the one you're talking about on Grant and Dallas is the pretty little brick or kind of stone working one, is that?
Brown brick.
And, and that's actually not an ADU that's on its own lot. That is a very old subdivision that was done. If you look at that on a lot by lot basis, that, that house is basically at 95% lot coverage for what's there because there's virtually no yard.
Right.
So what I'm hearing from several of the commissioners, and since I know that not everyone was here for the early discussions, one of the first things we, we brought up at, at CDC before we started this whole process, as we were starting this process, was, okay, there's some trends going on in zoning. One of those trends, you know, is like Airbnb's, do we want to regulate those? They said, no, we don't want to regulate those. So that's why you don't see any Airbnb regulations in what we're doing. One of those questions was, what about ADUs? ADUs are, is kind of an emerging trend. Do you think that we should prohibit those, allow those? What do you want us to do? And basically, the CDC surprised staff and said, no, we think that's fair for someone to make that request. So what our consultant did and what staff did is said, this is kind of new in the western suburbs. We don't know what right and wrong is. We know that we, we were, we were instructed that we should find a way to allow them. And what I'm hearing, the frustration is, is that you didn't come up with perfect codes to actually make them viable. And you're right. We modeled them after another community that's already doing them. And it's very hard to create a code to do something like you're illustrating on Dallas, which is a cute little house on its own little lot that is right up against the sidewalk and right up against the alley. So basically, zero lot setbacks. And we tried to say, well, how do we allow them in the existing house? How do we allow them in, above an existing garage? How do we allow them if they want to build their own? And we're trying to get the basics so that people can make the requests. So when I heard you say 1600 square feet, you saw Scott jump a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of homes in Westmont that aren't 1600 square feet.
Right, that's true.
Especially, you know, you know, a lot of the cottages that we have around here. And those are the ones that have the available space on their lot to build. And then suddenly you end up with an ADU that's bigger than the actual house.
Right.
And we have done things like exempt a parking requirement for an ADU. So then if you're creating a 1600 square foot ADU and no parking requirement, we don't allow overnight parking in our areas, you know, that creates issues. So what we did is we took baby steps so that people can make the request. There's always the availability and opportunity for them to ask for variances based on their lot configurations. So. So, we can, we can totally go back and try to figure this out. Most of the communities that are doing this well are much more urbanized than we are, have a difference in housing, they're, they have a lot of housing discrepancy, they're, it's just too expensive, so you're trying to create other housing options. We have a variety of housing options in town. Our direction was basically, it's fair for someone to, wanna age in place, have their mother-in-law, you know, have their, you know, figure out how to do that, or if they wanna have a small income unit, you know, so that they can afford to stay in their house. So as you're looking at these, just understand, that was the direction we gave the consultant, was find a good model to best fit us, and that's what you're looking at. So, it's not that staff is passionate either way, on what the sizes are, what the setbacks are, what the heights are, we were just trying to say, how do we allow this without upsetting all the neighbors on either side of you? And, with this overlaying layer of lot coverage, which really is used as a stormwater mitigation measure, which in Westmont is pretty restrictive in comparison to other communities, because someone said it, lot coverage is always overarching that, and a limiting factor on it. So, sorry for that little, I, I just, I have a lot of new people here, and we're doing our best to try to accommodate what the CDC said we should try to make options for, and it is, it is, we know this zoning ordinance is gonna reveal things that aren't working out quite right, and we know that we're gonna have to sit down and reexamine what we're doing. This is one of the hard ones, the ADUs, it's one of the hard ones, so.
John?
Sure, I mean, Joe actually gave a great, kind of, opportunity for me to speak on this, because I think I missed part of the initial CDC recommendations, but what's jumping out at me, and I'm probably going the opposite way here, as the architects here, and, and maybe the village attorney can kind of lend some insight here, the problem that I'm wrapping my head around, is if we allow an ADU, and that person there is not, so I understand the multi-generational, keeping it within family, the history of in-laws, just in general, my concern is, if you have a renter, or someone who is not related to the, you know, blood, marriage, household, however we define it, to the primary lot owner, how will that impact local enforcement if there is a nuisance issue, a barking dog? Does that now add extra steps that the village has to enforce? And is that part of the reason why we don't see this trend in a lot of municipalities, because of the Pandora's Box, that kinda get opened up on the enforcement side? But the other one, this is multi-part, so I apologize, I'm not gonna hit you all at once, the other concern that I have is-
Protection, compound question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The other, the other issue that I'm seeing is, as of right now, once we allow this, we might have a ton, we might be opening up the door to where, if we say, hey, we didn't do this right, or we need to change this, or we wanna pull it back, we may already have non-conforming issues now, and we're stuck with whatever's there. So we're not necessarily dipping our toe in it, we're opening the door all the way on it. And my concern here is, has CDC, was that addressed at the CDC level of these items? I, I don't see how CDC could say, we're not gonna talk about short-term rental, but say we're going to allow an ADU, which could absolutely, I'm gonna have to tell them, they could list on a short-term rental site. I don't see how we don't have to, I don't see how we wouldn't be forced to at least address that issue, at the very least for an ADU, because, just like Joe said, when you have your neighbors, you know, you're, you're not taking away a right, because the right isn't there, but now, your neighbor has the right to put something up, which very much changes borderline what is a single-family district to a multifamily, or a two-unit district. You're now taking away any input they have, and we're going silent on whether or not that person could be transient, we're not addressing how many cars are needed, you know, when people stay at some of these Airbnb's, I've done, and I've been in this business for almost a decade, advising clients and doing it personally in the city, this is a very different model, if you allow it on a residential site, and our code has not adequately addressed it. So if we are gonna go forward with an ADU, we would have to address short-term rentals, effectively not allowing them here, because that is not what the purpose of this is. It's not a way to find any lot owner to generate revenue through any means necessary. The idea was, my understanding was always, multi-generational home, as well as affordable housing, though I recognize that affordable housing is not as applicable here, like, versus the city of Chicago, when you have a lack of simply land. And that's, that's kind of my concern here, is, did that get brought up at CDC? And am I on the right page? I might be completely wrong, my concerns are-
I think staff's probably, they attended the CDC meeting, so they're following the direction of the village board members who were present about that, I, I wasn't present.
Sure.
I don't know if Scott or Joe, if you've got comments about those concerns.
So, what, what we raised, is we said, what do we think about this ADU question? And it was, basically, it was generally supported, explore it. Is that fair to say, Scott?
Uh, we, we received, I think, multiple trustees were in favor of them.
But, we did not do a deep dive on, what, we did ask, we, we did highlight that, because we don't, we're not home rule, we don't have the ability to regulate, that it is only multi-generational, it, it could be rented to anyone. The way that code enforcement would deal with that is, it's just like any other renter, so, we go after the property owner for property maintenance violations. If a renter is complaining because they have cold water, and their landlord is not providing it, and they give us access, then we have certain rights in helping the renter in, in their, you know, situation. But we don't have the right to go in and inspect the rental unit at any time, or on an annual basis, like some larger communities that have a rental inspection program.
Sure.
We don't have that. We did have discussions of, well, you are, that does mean that your regular homeowner is now a landlord, and the variation of good landlords and bad landlords is always there. So, it, it, we did address that it would be a difficult thing to regulate in terms of code enforcement, but we would still have a property owner and someone to go after, you know, in terms of the property owner. So if, if I owned a home, and I thought, you know what, for me to stay in my home, prices are going up, having an ADU will help me stay in my home longer as I age in place, to have a second income, and I am overwhelmed with being a landlord, I used to own a duplex, I was overwhelmed when I used to own a duplex, because even, even trying to manage that can be a bit overwhelming. We just got through the question of, do we want to have options for those people that wanna do this? And the answer was, yes, overwhelming, yes. We don't have a way to regulate who's living in it, what kind of rental it is.
But we can regulate noise, and things like that, parking violations.
Yes, we can regulate, yeah, we can regulate noise. It's likely we can't intervene between, if you own the house and you rent it to someone, and they're making noise, that's kind of between you and your, your renter, unless it's going off property, and, and to the neighbor, and then probably we do get much more involved in that. It's John's point, so, off property is-
And that's my concern, is, was, it sounds like they said, hey, this is a good idea, we wanna hear it, but they, have they heard this part, the rest of that?
They, I, I trust that they're watching, they are watching this, and will watch it to see what the discussion was.
So, we do have a summary of that specific meeting, it's in your staff report from the original public hearing. So the direction that we received from them was, that they were interested in the topic, and learning more about ADUs, and they directed staff to take that to the public hearing, which is this, to dissect it more. So I think everything, every point you're raising, they also raise at CDC in particular, they did feel somewhat comfortable that the nuisance regulations that we have in the municipal code would cover a lot of the restrictions that we can't place on ADUs, like, who can live there, and other requirements. But obviously, we're working through it with the commission, and then ultimately, they'll have to take a final vote on it.
I honestly don't see, knowing this town and living here, I don't see if this goes through, people are gonna be lining up at the door to get these permits. You know, I, I think they might, especially in the beginning, be far and few between who, who do this, but, I understand all the points you brought up, but I, I still think it's very beneficial to include, include this in the code.
And, and I believe that an ADU in an existing home, or in addition to an existing home, is much easier to figure out, because obviously, it has to meet the setbacks of the home, we can regulate the square footage of it, it's gonna be an entrance to the home. Where it gets really hard to navigate is, if you're gonna try to either convert an existing garage, which I almost think you probably can't, because most of those garages were not built structurally to easily accommodate an ADU. So really, what seems like we're really dwelling on is, it doesn't seem that easy to build a separate ADU. And, you're right, because you're basically building a second house on a lot, where, I mean, I can almost confidently say that in our older sections of town, most of the properties are already pushing the upper limits of their lot coverage, which means they may have to take down their garage, and can't have a garage and an ADU. And, right now, there's no way to get around the lot coverage thing. Maybe our three hundred foot deep lots, way on the north side of town, or way down on the southeast side of town, they might have opportunity, because they've got those deep lots to do that, but that also means that you're gonna have a second house way back in the back, that's even harder to regulate with code enforcement, because we don't have any access back there. So if someone's saying, it's awful noisy back there, because it seems like the tenants of that are having problems, we don't necessarily have, we can't see it from the street, you know, if we don't have access back there, it's harder to regulate. So I, I feel like, the hard part of this discussion is not the ADU itself, it's the separate building ADU is, is hard to navigate.
I think that's a good distinction. I personally wanna say, I don't think, I think eight hundred and fifty square feet is a fine amount of space for the narrow intent of what we're trying to propose as a separate building. But I, I also think we're only a couple hundred feet away from being able to have a garage and an ADU, so, we're very close to that. What would make a livable apartment and a garage, so we might as well, in my opinion, add two hundred square feet, or whatever, I would defer to Commissioner Lynn on that, what it would take to have a, a two-car garage and an ADU, just because it would open up possibilities for a lot more folks, and we're close to that threshold, but right now, I think we're just a little below, below it.
I think, I would propose in that case, that if, if we do that, we just have a separate regulation related to an attached garage for the ADU itself.
You mean, just combine them into one?
We would, we would say, like, if we wanna increase the size of the ADU, we'd probably do eight hundred and fifty square feet, which is what we have now, for the ADU, and then we'd have a separate provision that says the size for the attached garage.
What about detached garage, though?
Um, are you talking about the building footprint overall, then?
Yeah, right now, they're both accessory structures, which is limited to twelve fifty total.
So we would look at increasing the twelve fifty?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying, I got it.
Yeah. And, and again, just in my opinion, just to allow both to coexist at a minimum, at a minimal, smallest footprint that's viable, to have a bathroom, a bedroom, kitchen, you know?
Does, do other commissioners have a thought on that? Because that's back in the first part of this article, related to just overall building footprint for accessory structures on the lot. We can certainly look at increasing it, because we have other provisions in the code that reduce what's allowed there, like lot coverage, so.
I, I, I'm thinking about something you said, my worry is, so, there's a lot of limiting things on these nine thousand square foot lots that are smaller, they're not gonna be able to do that, because the lot coverage is gonna limit them. I just wanna make sure that we're not saying, no, you can do something that's great, only to have everyone come to us and say, but I can't do it on my lot. We see that now, you know, kind of, on that, for our next planning and zoning meeting, I think we have like two or three lot coverage variances, where people are hitting the limits, and they're, they're, you know, for, for years, we didn't see them, because everyone kind of, you know, stayed within their lot coverage, and staff was very good at trying to make sure that, that stayed there. But we're seeing people just say, well, I, I just kinda want it, so I'm gonna make that request. I, I, I just caution that if we go too big, then everyone that has one of these, these smaller lots is gonna approach us and say, okay, I've seen you pass that, and I wanna do it. And then they hit the wall of staff, saying, well, actually, you can only do a four hundred square foot one with all your other lot coverage that you already have. So, I'm okay if we wanna amend it to be more, but I would wanna make sure that that language is very specific to reiterate the, but there is an overall lot coverage type thing. Because Scott's the one that fields the phone calls all day long, of, well, I heard I can do something, and then he says, yeah, very few lots in the, the village can actually do this. So unless you have a three hundred foot deep lot, you're kind of, you're kind of out of luck. Or, your option is to ask the, the planning and zoning for variance to the square footage of that.
Which is hard for us, in my opinion, to navigate.
Yes.
Because it's a stormwater issue.
Yes.
We're not engineers.
Okay, so.
Well, we can look into it.
You can do what?
We can look into the, what we were talking about, the building footprint coverage for accessory structures and buildings, not structures.
Sorry?
Would there be any consideration to pulling this out of the, these amendments, and considering them separately at a later date?
ADUs in general?
Yeah.
We can always consider it.
What was your question? I'm sorry I missed that.
Oh, is there any consideration to pulling the ADU regulations out of this, these comprehensive amendments, and consider them at a later date, next year, when there's a little more time to study and refine them?
Or, or I'd, I'd say, what if, what if we said, they can exist in the existing building? Because I think that's where we're much more comfortable. So we're still allowing them, but acknowledge that the separate ADU maybe needs revisiting. So I, I just wanna put that as another option.
Yeah.
That you dissect that piece of it.
Attached versus detached, and not?
I will just note, we did receive comments regarding ADUs from three people, actually the most-
Say that again?
We received comments from at least three people, and I think we had two other people come to the public hearing in support of them, just so you're aware.
Wait, wait, so I think that the reverse of that is, we haven't had anyone contact us and say they're against ADUs. We've had, heard from three very passionate, maybe three, maybe more, very passionate people that are in support of it, so.
If you think in your, you, you have a better knowledge of, of lot coverage throughout the city than we do, than I do, and your argument is, is valid enough for me, just to say, keep it as it is, if that's the case, so as, so we don't raise, raise hopes and, and opportunities well above and beyond what people can even actually attain in their lot. And if I really, if I have a small lot, and I really wanna build an ADU, I could do it above my garage, right?
Or build a new garage with the garage below.
Right, that's what I mean.
And it, you wouldn't be penalized for the garage square footage, you could still get a full eight hundred and fifty square feet up above.
Yeah.
But, height is limiting, and I know I have someone that's, that's pointed out that height is limiting, because height is limited to eighteen feet, which means that, and, and we measure our height, I think, to the midpoint of a sloped roof, but if you have a sloped roof, then you don't have as much livable space, because you can't, you're gonna bump your head.
And it says, the roof slope has to match the house.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's written in such a way to say that it basically shouldn't look like an anomaly, it should look like it was part of the lot. What about, I, I like exploring options, what about, and John, maybe you have a comment on this, what about ADUs in the building as permitted? as permitted, but ADUs as a separate, as a special use?
For detached?
Yeah, for a detached. Is that even a way to go with that, or no?
We did explore it.
Okay.
With the consultant. And we did think with the special use, it's hard to not allow a special use for those based on our requirements.
The special use standards, it would be very hard to say, to say no to any of them because it's really not altering the character of the neighborhood, it's really not lowering people's.
And we don't want to get into.
Okay, I just.
Living there.
Yeah, I just.
And it seems like an unnecessary regulatory step for something that the board has said, let's try to allow this and encourage it.
Sorry, a couple of things. One is, sorry if I spooked you when I said 1,600. Really, I just wanted an extra foot or so in the basement, really, like maybe 850 and up on the, up on the main level, and then not to regulate so much like whatever space that go beneath it. That was my original thought, the 1,600.
Your argument is that the impact visually and on the neighbors is not as impactful in a basement than on the ground floor or second floor.
Right. And I wouldn't want to, again, I just wouldn't want to put in like a seven-foot height limit to a basement because I think that's only encouraging people to build seven-foot tall basements where they're.
That still use it, yeah.
Yeah. And then, let me see, I know that we're talking a lot with numbers with this, I mean, that's what, how it's all presented. Is there, I mean, I didn't print out like the sketch that I had done, but is there, is there ever a time that you guys would want to see like a visual of what some of these numbers are making? Because I don't know if that's, I don't know, I feel like we're kind of guessing 15-foot, 18-foot height and not actually seeing it. I don't know if that'll be a trick when people see the code done, courthouse gets built and they're like, oh, my gosh, that's actually different than what I thought.
We can always provide at any following meeting, if we're looking at revising, obviously we're looking at revising a lot of language. So revising this section, we can always present any examples of ones we've seen done well. Like I said, in Evanston, they, I believe, just have those pre-permitted ones. We can always show them or provide them to.
A bulk enassing, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's probably real easy for us or our consultant to put that together.
I thought I heard once that Geneva has allowed it, but I'm not, I'm not too sure about that.
I know it's about 12 in the Chicagoland area from when we had CDC last year when we discussed it.
12 times.
Yeah, in the Chicagoland area.
For Westmont, we'd definitely be trend setting.
I, that's what we should be. We're the progressive village.
Well, I do think that in the long run, you know, say we have six of them built and they're perfect, they're wonderful, mother-in-law, but 25, 30 years from now, when that family no longer lives there, someone else lives in, the vast majority of these will be rental properties, they'll be Airbnbs or, and so I think your point is very valid and should absolutely be part of this discussion. Long-term, they will be rentals.
Yeah. I mean, a person, someone could own a house and rent it out as it is, though, right? I mean, there may, there may already be a bunch of Airbnbs here in town, already, right? So I don't, I don't know if that's.
And I would agree with Commissioner Lynn on that. It's just you're altering from a single-family area to then what I would argue is pretty close to a two-unit. You're essentially allowing anyone to change it practically by right.
Sure.
That's where my only struggle comes in. It's just opening up the floodgates. As long as the board is aware of that, you know, I always look at it from the zoning law or the real estate side of, most of what we do at this level is, did we open up the floodgates? When you do a text amendment, when you do a map amendment, what are the unintended consequences? And again, if this is, usually I tend to see this with elderly parents or relatives that move in, they want their independence, they don't want to be in the household, they want their own area. But again, it tends to be elderly, when they pass away, what are you, you're going to keep it vacant? So just the normal progression of the economics makes me think what's next. And right now, that's where my concern comes in. So I just want the board to be aware of it and raise it so they can dig that through.
Anything else on ADUs? With this course, pretty hard. Scott?
All I was going to add is, for my commissioners that weren't here, we did bring similar discussions from CDC to the commission, for this commission, regarding ADUs in particular. And we did get support from the commission, this commission, to explore it. And actually, they, we had stricter regulations on designs at the time, and we were proposing stricter designs that adhere to the neighborhood surroundings. The commission thought we went too far with that, and we actually pulled back a lot of the regulations for these. So just so you know, we did bring it before, but we can certainly look at reviewing it again.
Sorry, I do have one more comment.
No problem.
There is a limit on the entrances, the entrance must or cannot be on the side or rear. I might support the rear.
Unless there's an alley.
Right. I might support the rear, but I feel like we should give them, because these are such complicated, they can be hard to solve design problems, we should allow them the flexibility to enter on a side yard, in my opinion.
I think it's the interior side yard to a neighboring property is the thought there, where you don't want somebody's basically front steps coming out to the side of somebody's primary structure.
That's so common anyway. I mean, driveways butt property lines all the time, and you drive past your home to park behind, and then usually you have a side or rear door that you enter from your driveway. That's just a common.
Yeah, but usually set back from the side, setback from the interior side, so.
So do you mean that the entrance, but I was interpreting that as meaning it can't face the side property line?
I think that's how it's reading, and I think my comment when we were discussing it before was, we just don't want it on that one interior side. So we don't want it right on that property line, right near that easement.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I support a setback. I just think it should be allowed on that property line, facing that property line.
Got it.
That's it.
Let's move on to 706. Anybody have a, I don't, comment on air conditioner compressors and heat pumps?
No.
Okay. 707, animals.
I can't have, I can't believe you can't have rabbits.
Okay, so it, how are the chicken coops handled differently? Because they're not considered under this and there and there.
Chicken coops are a separate municipal code section.
That's why they're, okay.
Under, I believe it's animals.
Chapter 14, yeah, which is cross-referenced.
Yeah. And, nothing, no one, let's go on to 708. Antenna, satellite dishes, ham radios.
I have something on 708A1A.
708. A1.
A1A.
A1, yes.
May not exceed the maximum allowable building height. I just, I found it inconsistent with radio antennas and solar panels, which are based on the height above the roof. And I'm not sure why satellite dishes should have their datum on, be something else than the roof height. They seem like very similar structures to me, so I think they should conform. And solar panels, radio antennas, and satellite dishes should be based on building height or height above roof line. Wind energy conversion systems also seem to reference both the height and the zoning limits.
Height in the what?
Height and zone, height of the building and the zoning, height allowed in the district as measurements. So my comment overall is, can we be consistent with how some of these roof-mounted objects are determined in height? Because no one does, I would, I had not designed a house, but I assume that when I would design a house, I'm probably not thinking about later needing to add a satellite dish. And yet, I really want satellite TV, so someone's just going to come out and install it for me.
Yeah, I think we can look at the sections in particular. I think that is just the industry standard code from our consultant.
That's all I have for 08.
Section 709, donation drop boxes.
I have a question on that, unless I missed it. I don't see a time limit. So are you saying that they could have them 365 days a year?
I believe all it requires is a permit, and then they could be there in perpetuity.
It's a lawful use, and it's something that we should allow but regulate. And other communities have similar regulations or had no regulations, and someone came in and said, I want to put a donation drop box. And there's actually been lawsuits challenging communities that have prohibited outright.
Right, we've never allowed them.
Yeah, there was an accessory structure regulations, what's permitted, where we could say, yeah, it's allowed, but they have to be fenced and setback a certain amount, and there, it was a bit over restrictive. This is pretty consistent with what I've seen with other communities. Some have done it through a licensing regulation scheme outside of a zoning ordinance. But generally, they have to be, you know, you can't have debris or clothes or stuff just piled up outside. They've got to be kept neat and clean, or they're subject to code enforcement.
Well, I generally don't like these boxes for that reason. If you ever drive around and, you know, you can see and people dump furniture and clothes and garbage and.
It's funny, because I've driven around and thinking the same thing, and I've never seen a problem with them, but Lisa, I don't.
We must travel in different areas.
John, this might be a question for you. If we were to require a time limit on them, basically saying every year you have to come in for another permit or something, is that feasible for looking at other communities?
I don't know if that makes sense, because.
I tend to agree, I'm just.
You tend to agree?
Yeah, I tend to agree that it would just be an overencumberance on, honestly, staff to review these every single year, if that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thought is, if you, if we build in language that you, first we would have to be part of the, have to see if we could even license these, it's a non-home rule community, probably not. So we're kind of limited.
That's why we're proposing in the zoning.
To regulate it through zoning. And then we can't have a, you know, even a registration requirement, doesn't seem like something we do in zoning. I imagine if there's, we don't even regulate it in chapter 22 under business registration. I don't believe.
Regulate vending machines, I think, but that's different.
Can I weigh in on that? And I'm probably way off base. What I don't love is that we're calling it a permit. We don't have, I mean, we have building permits, we don't have zoning permits. And most permits have a construction period and then close out of that permit. It does feel like as long as these are here, there needs to be an active thing that is allowing them so that you can't, so if they don't abide by the maintenance, how do you then say, well, then you've lost that ability? And maybe that's wrong because you said it's a by right permitted use. A permit is a very limited window to get them installed, and then it's closed out. And how is that enforceable later if they're not abiding by the maintenance or other stuff? Or they put three when only two are allowed, or something like that? So I just, I guess I'm hitting you with a question you're not prepared to answer.
I'm not, but, you know, it does, there is a section here, it says that we grant, provide a permit, and then that we can revoke the permit.
Yes, but that implies that the permit is, as long as you have an active permit, it can be revoked. We don't have a system set up for non-building permits that are active, so.
It seems like that's what the consultant was thinking about when he drafted that language, is something different than a building permit.
Yeah.
I will say, this is generally looking at other communities, how they handle it.
Yeah. So it kind of feels like, even though it says it's a permit, it feels like it's a license?
A business license.
Well, as a, I'd have to check this again. As a non-home rule municipality, we're limited in what we can license. The village does have a business registration requirement for all businesses. I'd have to check that and see if we'd want to, one, if they're already covered that And if we'd have the right to revoke business registration, meaning they can't operate because of so many violations over time.
Yeah.
All good questions.
So what I'm hearing is John will do some research and provide it to staff regarding legality.
Yes.
My, my comment that I circled on my page is, is a permit really necessary? So I want to question the whole presumption of, why are we trying to regulate these boxes? Has there been known nuisance issues in the village with over donations?
What has happened, and I'm not going to say it's happened recently, what used to happen, was they would just appear on someone's property. And you try to go after the property owner and say, you're not allowed to have this, or if you have it, you need to, because basically, we kind of regulated them to the best of our ability as recycling bins, because they are somewhat like recycling bins, which basically means you kind of need to screen it, hide it like a dumpster. Which, you know, the whole purpose of them is to be seen, you know, so that when you're driving, you're like, I know where that bin is, I can go and dump my stuff over there when I'm cleaning out my garage. So for a long time, people were just depositing them where they wouldn't get in trouble. And so if a property owner wasn't paying attention to their property, you know, suddenly they had two or three or four of them. And then over one weekend, if someone over donates and the bins are full, then you get to the situation that Commissioner Peterson was saying where it's overflowing. I've got a Home Depot out in Homer Glen that they're always overflowing there, so I have seen where that happens.
But isn't that already covered in like a violation of some kind? They have stuff strewn about?
It is, but when you go after the property owner, they go, we didn't even put them here. Like, we don't know what's going on, we don't know who to contact, are you telling us that we have to go and dump these big metal boxes?
Right, we are.
Take care of this.
Right, just like what we said with the ADUs.
And you're trying to reach out, and mysteriously, the phone numbers or contact information is never easily findable on these, you know, and, you know, so it always puts the property owner in this weird place. So I'm not saying that a permit is the right thing to do, but basically, it is taking up a parking space that might be a required parking space. We want to see that they're in the right place, that there aren't too many of them, and that they're being maintained. And I think that the consultant said the easiest way to have the contact information, to know that they're, they're allowed to be there, that you got the property owner's permission, is through this permit that they mentioned. So that's my best explanation of it.
And they tend to put them on corners where they're seen, and then you have line of sight, I mean.
I've never seen, I've never noticed, I mean, I have belonged to organizations that had donation drop boxes, but these things were like the size of those green recycling containers. People would drop off soup cans.
Yeah.
And no one in that organization is capable of producing a sight plan for that two-by-three foot box. So I, I think it's a difference in scale, like between what I'm thinking when I think donation box, and you guys are thinking more dumpster-sized boxes.
Yeah.
That can overflow. And maybe there's some provision that eliminates the need to get a permit for a recycling bin. So I can have my soup can collection out there. And I also question those, there was, there was comment, public comment about, do we not allow library swap boxes anymore? Or is that prohibited or allowed in these list of uses?
A library has a drop box.
I'm talking about like neighborhood share book programs.
Yeah, that's not a drop, a drop box. And it's a, it's a sharing.
But it's something that people just drop books in that might fall under this.
And I don't, I don't believe the current code addresses them at all. I don't believe this code addresses those at all. So basically, they are neither prohibited or permitted. So we, we, we have never done anything like, oh, that's not allowed, or you need a permit for that because of the typical nature of why people have those out there. And they're typically on residential properties. So...
So maybe I, I'll leave it at my suggestion of, of having a size maximum where these things start to apply.
I actually remember really early on, we had a few companies that they were built out of press wood that were, was painted. And they were the size of the big ones. Because there are, there are a lot of people that figure out that, that, that some of that stuff that is being donated has value.
Yeah.
You know, and so they were trying to capture some of that. So they were making their own donation bins. So...
I think for the donation boxes, we will look at to the best of ability, not trying to require a permit for it based on the attorney's research into the topic. And if we still need to require it, we'll mention it in the next.
I'm okay with the permit requirement.
I know you are.
From a, from a zoning permit standpoint.
Yes, I understand.
And I'm okay with regulating them. I just think we can't prohibit them.
Yes.
Sort of the American Legion flag drop boxes at the, at the park district and at the library, are those permitted?
Those are inside.
No, they're outside. Well, you're right. Yeah, they're inside the sliding doors at the park. Just disregard. Okay, moving on.
Um, sorry.
No, you don't have to apologize.
Paragraph E, height and size is just a typo. A donation drop box may not exceed six.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
709, paragraph E, cannot exceed six something in height.
Feet.
Feet. So we need to add the unit.
We will add that.
Just want to air these things out. That's it.
Okay. 710, electric vehicle charging stations.
Nothing.
711, fences. 712, fireplaces, grills, kitchens and fire pits outdoor.
With the, with fences? Sorry, with fences?
Yes, regarding fences. Go ahead.
Right. I think, I don't know if it's addressed in this point. I just know that in the, I had to go for, I think for a variance. And when I, when I built a corner house where I had to get, I wanted a six foot fence, I had what the corner house's backyard was. But, but that there was rules to say that at the time, I don't know if it's changed or not, but that, that the, even though, because it was against the street, that the rule was that it couldn't be any more than three or four feet. But because it was a corner side yard, I kind of figured no one wants to see them. Like, they don't want to see hanging clothes or anything. Neighbors, I would think that. So we did a six foot fence and I think it worked out well. But is, is a six foot fence, six foot fence allowed for people in corner side yards?
Yeah, and the, it's number 711B to A. The current regulation is if it's behind the principal structure, it can be no closer than 15 feet to that street side property line, but we're proposing to reduce that down to five feet for corner lots.
And then we also provision in there for sight vision on alleys and public streets.
Okay.
So the cut that you have of that one fence would still be required.
Right. You could come within five feet of the property line?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's based on, we've gotten a lot of requests for that.
I bet. Yeah. Thank you. I, I have another, I know another corner side yard where they didn't, they didn't do fences. They have like a three foot fence and then they started putting blankets up to try and make up for it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think a few years ago, we, on 55th Street, we, we were, everyone was coming in for a variation on fence height because of they're along the busy street. And I...
The 55th Street height variances were specifically because of the busy street. And what is reflected here was based on the variances that the planning and zoning had been granting over the several years. And if you perpetually are approving those, it means we need to go back and look at our zoning ordinance. So this is very reflective of what the commission and previous commissioners were typically saying yes to. So...
When it's on a busy street, can you go up to eight feet with it?
We did not have a provision for that.
It says in front yards, you can go up to six feet on arterial roads.
Yeah, we, we're, that's related to, we have a lot of properties, like on 63rd Street, where their side yards are technically a side yard. And our fence regulations don't allow them to have a six foot fence or more solid. And that's a busy street, for example. A lot of those were built with the fences already there and they come in for a permit to, it's all in disrepair and they want a new fence. And we've had issues with that and trying to get that. So we're clarifying that particular section too.
I will tell you though, that in Darien, so Cass Avenue down and through Darien, they do allow seven foot residential to the busy Cass Avenue. So if you've ever noticed that, especially the newer ones, the PVC fences, you see people replacing their, Darien does allow higher than six along their major thoroughfares when they are rear yards. So Darien has a lot of, where the rear yard, because the modern day subdivision doesn't put your front or side yard on the busy street. It puts it, it puts it on that internal local street. So Darien has a lot more newer design subdivisions where it is a true backyard that is, that is there. We have a few of them, like down on 63rd.
Deer Creek.
We don't have, we don't currently have a provision for anything taller than six for those. If, if the commissioners feel that there should be a provision, that's something we can always consider.
We can look at it. I'll say generally, when we talk with residents, they don't want a seven foot fence. They are just requesting six.
It's a big cost difference. It's a huge cost difference because most of the stock
Yes.
is six feet. So...
But, but the cost difference aside, it'd be nice to give them the ability to go to seven, I would think.
Yep.
And just let them decide whether or not they want the cost to...
Well, and I don't think we've ever had a variance request for that. If we saw variance request for, can I have a seven foot fence because I've got a backyard, then I think that would be our impetus to say, maybe we need to explore that. Because in my history here, I don't know that we've ever had a request for a residential that tall.
This kind of reminds me too, when there's a lot of variances, there's no change to the zoning code, right? But you couldn't do a, a text amendment. But that's if someone applies for a text amendment, is it?
So it can come, text amendments can come to, one of two ways. For example, this is a text amendment.
Right.
Come from staff as directed, or it can come from a petitioner for a text amendment. Text amendments are generally harder because it would apply to a bunch of other properties, not just this one unique circumstance, which is what a variance is for.
Is there, is there any mechanism so that if a person, if something, tons of variances are going through, say for fences, rather than, is there, rather than wait for a petitioner to, to go for a text amendment, is it that the, yeah, that the staff could put up for a text amendment?
Yeah, we, we keep record of all the approvals. And if we're seeing, you know, a lot of one thing or the other, we take note of it. Since I've been here, we've basically been, we looked back at all the approvals and that's what we're implementing into this code because we knew this was coming up. So...
And that, that happens all the time. You see it in trends of what uses are coming up. So it doesn't necessarily have to be because planning and zoning sees repeated stuff coming to them for variances. Text amendments can be initiated because the economic climate is changing, because trends are coming up in zoning rules. One of the other reasons is we see the same thing happening again and again. So I know you're fairly new here, but we, we've seen lots of variances for the size of garages, that the 576 that we currently allow is pretty restrictive. And quite honestly, you might be able to get a three car in 576, but you don't get your lawnmower in there too, you know. So that is where we generated the maximum of 1,250 square feet because we saw repeatedly when someone was asking for it, the planning and zoning was saying yes to it. So text amendments could come in many different versions. But then we've also had people that say, I have a use, that use isn't allowed in that district. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a text amendment to allow that use there. If it's a special use, I'm going to immediately apply for a special use. So first, let's consider the, the use question. Should it be amended? And then if the answer to that is, recommendation on that is yes, then I'm here, I want to ask for a special use as well. So it comes in many different versions. It doesn't have to wait 46 years, like, you know, we're saying. So...
For time's sake, fences, any other questions?
What?
Fences, any other questions on fences? Okay.
Moving on, 712, fireplaces, grills, kitchens and fire pits outdoor.
I have comments on this one. I'm pretty sure right now at Costco, I can buy an outdoor kitchen with a roof on it. My backyard neighbor also purchased one, I believe with their COVID money back in the day, that has a significant roof over it. Those would not be allowed per 712, section C. And so I want to question whether that's an appropriate regulation because some of, you can buy these things prefabricated with roofs.
That particular section is derived from the building department.
Yeah, I suspected, but I don't support it.
Yeah, we can always discuss it with them, but...
I think this whole section is coming from the building department.
Largely, building and fire.
And I think they're too conservative. I also question, is this not allowing me to have my Weber grill on my wooden deck? It doesn't, it reads like it's not allowing that.
We don't consider those related to permanent structures, if that makes sense. So if it's, if it's a Weber grill, Blackstone, whatnot, I don't think it'd be regulated here. This is talking about permanent. That can be clearer though.
So if it's using, if it's a, I have another friend who has a gas, a propane powered fireplace on their deck. That's permitted. If this is excluding, if this is, this has to be hardwired gas or a permanent structure, I think that should be made clear in here. I want to, I just want to make sure that I can grill on my deck, folks. That's all.
Yeah, we can look at it.
And again, covered kitchens, I would go back to the building department about those.
Right now in the code, we call them summer kitchens.
Summer kitchens?
We have a square footage requirement for them in the current code. I am frantically going back to the encroachment table to see if that is still in here.
Yeah, it's this number 21.
21.
Fireplace or grill freestanding masonry. So I read that one as permanent because it's like, well, this is made out of masonry. So this is a permanent structure.
Well, the outdoor kitchens are in its own line, the number 28.
Yeah.
Encroachment table.
But what I'm saying is I think we need to revisit those two because those are usually tied together in some way. For staff.
Okay. I tend to agree. For me, it's, it's the language where it starts by saying freestanding masonry fireplace, grills, fire pits, outdoor kitchens. And then it defines the outdoor kitchens as typically a masonry structure, which kind of implies the permanence.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't imply the permanence to the freestanding masonry fireplaces, grills, fire pits. I think it just needs better clarity.
Yes.
712, fireplaces, disregard. 713, flagpoles. 714.
Before we get to 714, I want to make it clear that we're revisiting a section at the staff level completely. So you'll see revisions to this entire section.
Such as defining what, more clearly what a fleet vehicle is?
Yes, we're redefining that section for clarity based on the public comments we received at the last public hearing. So we'll be revising that with revisions. So I don't think commenting on it tonight would do any justice.
Okay. So we'll be revisiting 714. Moving on to 715, garages and carports. Staff, nothing? Okay. 716, generators. I have nothing.
I have just one question on the generators. Paragraph A says generators must be installed to mitigate noise impacts. I want to make sure that that's defined somewhere. What, what constitutes a noise impact? I've worked with some jurisdictions where there's a decibel level.
Yeah, I believe it's within our performance standards, which are going to be in the municipal code, not in the zoning code any longer. And I believe one of the changes we're making to the performance standards is requirements for all districts, not just the manufacturing district, which is how it reads right now.
So the next section says that they have to be enclosed by a sound attenuation box or cabinet.
Those, yeah, those would be like sometimes plastic overheads on the generators or whatnot. So if you've seen a Generac one, they have the enclosure on top. So it reduces the sound. But that would clarify, I think, your response.
Okay. So I'm going to ask this question looking at you, Scott, but I think it's more for John. I believe that the noise standards only apply to sustained noise and the intermittent use of the generator doesn't typically fall under that sustained noise requirement. So I believe that the noise regulations in the decibels are for a manufacturer that's constantly manufacturing and making noise.
Supposed to a temporary?
But I, so for example, we've got Quincy Station here that has a generator that's right behind the building. And it has, it has good mufflers on it and it's got the cabinet that is insulated. But we did receive noise complaints when they were testing it. And I believe that our, our conclusion was it did not violate the noise standards because it was intermittent. And the rules were intermittent there. So where I'm not trying to go with that is I don't think it would, it would place a requirement on the Generac that you have installed at your home because that is considered intermittent versus always running.
Yeah, unless it's always running.
Yes.
I have, I have dealt with uses.
I believe that's typically with the current performance standards where that tends to land.
So you're saying that you wouldn't typically expect a violation or a, or a ticket? What's the...
No, no, I don't, and I'm deliberately saying I believe because I don't have the exact answer. But I believe that there's limits for those intermittent things that are much higher than if it's sustained, which are much lower.
Okay.
And I don't think it would fall under the lower sustained one. It would be limitation, it would be under the higher.
And that makes sense because like if the neighborhood...
Yeah, so things like nonroutine operations, accessory to the primary activities in which are temporary in nature or conducted infrequently, a generator would probably fall under that. So we couldn't use the... So we couldn't use the decibel level noise standards for that. But I think requiring them to somehow be screened to minimize noise impacts is a viable option.
Okay, so that would be no changes to it.
I want to just note, this is also for residential properties, not just commercial.
I'm sorry?
This is also for residential properties. So screening, I think, is an overburden on a property owner.
And by screening, I meant, I think, what was in here, which is enclosed by a sound attenuation box.
Oh, okay. That's different. Got it.
Okay, I'm fine with it as it's written, then.
John, you agree? You agree with it? I do, too. Section 717, geothermal, thermal heat exchange systems. I'm gonna see too much of that around here. 718, home occupations.
Scott, why didn't you guys take out the may not occupy more than the 25% under F regulations, number one? It used to always be so. It's not a primary use.
I believe I will throw that to the director.
Where do you, I don't see it.
That came from our internal readings.
I don't have an answer. I don't remember why we decided to strike that out.
We can, we certainly add it back. Would you, or in the commission, want that added back in?
Well, I just, I was kind of there to catch, to make it so, it's not the primary use. It, you know, it's, it's just a little part of your home.
Yeah, it might just be because we expressly determined that it has to be an accessory to the dwelling use, I guess. So it's a reiteration of existing code.
I believe the reason we thought it was too vague was because it says may not occupy more than 20% of the single story of a home.
Yeah.
And what if they're storing stuff, what if they're making stuff for Etsy and they're storing, like, how did, it was really hard to do the 25%. We're not gonna come in and measure someone's house. It was more of a, you know, is this truly still accessory to the home that's here? I think, I believe that's where that generated.
I think so, based on internal discussion.
Well, there's really no way to regulate that anyway, so I guess it doesn't matter if it's in there or not, if it's a home occupation, so...
But we don't register them. We don't, I mean, it's, what we're really trying to do is make sure that whatever's happening in the home isn't causing negative effects outside of the home, so...
And I believe they can appeal any decision that we make based on the home occupation and the code, so.
Okay, thank you.
Remember the dentist office on South Cast?
Yeah.
Home.
Then it's becoming a spa, so, you know.
Is it?
Yeah.
Finally, I saw that it finally sold. Were you ever inside?
I've never been inside.
The floor space, but...
Yeah.
I thought, why not taxidermists? I thought about each one of these uses that were prohibited, that we are, that we're just saying no to.
A lot of them have chemicals related.
Right, that's what I figured.
Yeah. These are pretty standard, what you see in a lot of communities.
Number five, I do think needs clarity, since a lot of people rent out or utilize their personal vehicle for Uber or Lyft, those kinds of uses, that we're not trying to limit them from doing so.
This might be a question for John. I know we have regulations, I think in the business regulations, related to registering these type of vehicles.
It's Chapter 92, I think, vehicles for hire, but I think you raise a good point. I'm looking at that. People may be confused, and I think we can put excluding personal vehicles used for ride share. Is this trying to prevent, like, a call center for a taxi service, or having a fleet of, because I think there's probably prohibitions on parking commercial vehicles outside. I'm not sure.
Sorry, I was checking the existing code.
So Tom, you're suggesting that parentheses, ride share vehicles.
Some kind of asterisk, or, or maybe just delete all five if it's already covered elsewhere in the code, that you can't park a commercial bus in your front driveway?
So a lot of the prohibited uses that are shown here, all of it's new technically, from the original code, but it's derived from kind of the existing home occupation regulations. I think taxi, limo, van, or bus services are all, are not mentioned throughout the existing home occupation code. So if it's regulated in a different way, I would agree with your commissioner.
Just delete it rather than append it with the...
If the commission feels comfortable with that. But that would allow, if one of your neighbors to have a taxi parked on their property.
Or multiple taxis, right?
Or multiple taxis.
I don't think the one taxi is offensive, but if there's multiple, then that's...
I don't want to see a taxi. I want to see just an Uber, that looks like a normal car.
So then that would just be, just us clarifying language, not deleting.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I almost feel like it goes with Section F7, that says only passenger automobiles, passenger vans, and passenger trucks may be used in contact of the home occupation. So when I hear you saying an Uber, you're thinking a passenger vehicle.
Yeah.
It feels like the prohibition of taxi, limo, or bus services is really saying marked taxis, full-size limos, and full-size buses. Like, it's, it's...
But it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, but I feel that's what it was trying to do. I mean, is that a fair...
I mean, I think a taxi is a passenger vehicle.
Don't, don't taxis and buses have B-plates, or no?
B-plates?
Yeah, business.
They very well may, but we don't restrict that.
I'm just wondering if that helps in separating.
To restrict it.
Generally, zoning code, we don't like to use plate types, because they can change.
Sure. Well, I'm just thinking, you know, what are the, the black limos that says livery on them? You know, if I was driving one of those, that wouldn't be an offensive thing to park at the house. I just think that, Steph, we can look at what was, what the, what the consultant was trying to push us into here, and see if that's appropriate or not.
Yeah, it's, and it's really fleet. Like, I'm okay if you want to use, if you happen to have your own limo even, and you can fit it on your property. I don't care if you drive people around in it. Actually, I just don't want two limos that are just there as a business, you know?
Yeah, we can look back at it, and look at some surrounding communities, too.
I also question tow truck services. I thought about that one. I have been near a large tow truck when it started. It was loud. When it turns over, it's a loud engine. I thought maybe that's why we're excluding it, because we don't want that engine noise at all hours of day or night. But I also know that tow truck driving is a common, like, do it your own, start your own business strategy. So I question, why are we limiting it, and do we need to?
I think there's a difference between parking your tow truck in your driveway and a home occupation. I think this is saying, you can't operate a tow truck business as a home occupation out of your house.
Correct.
There may be other regulations that would prohibit larger, commercial-like vehicles, like a tow truck, from parking in a residential driveway.
I think Commissioner Sharp is saying he's okay with that operating.
I'm, I question it. I see it. I know of at least one tow truck that parks at a residential driveway in this village. I walked past it, but...
I know it's a source of historical debate in the village, because those are oftentimes diesel engines. They fire up and run for an hour. They emit fumes and noise, and neighbors complain about them.
I don't have a strong opinion one way or another. I'm just seeking clarity, and like, why is, why is it excluded, and do we all agree with the exclusion? Because I'm on the fence, I guess, about it. As well as animal care. What if I was a dog lover, but I want to have one or two dogs boarding with me? How's that different than owning three?
We are, at the staff level, we get those requests all the time, for onsite grooming, kennel services, whatnot. Generally, it's, it's very impactful for your neighbors. I think out of most of these, that is the most impactful, directly to your neighbors.
Like those Rover services? You know, it's very easy for someone to sign up and have four or five dogs that they're watching for people, like, while they're on vacation type stuff. We've had...
I didn't know that existed.
Or just daily, I mean, I used to drop my dog off at a residential house, and they'd have eight dogs running around barking in the backyard.
Yeah. But you're allowed to have eight dogs running around the backyard if you own them.
If they're yours.
Not for, not if you're getting paid to do it. That's the...
Yeah.
If you're fostering, you're not getting paid to do it.
It's just a strange, I guess, distinction among this list, because it's the same result. It's just a business model.
Before we leave...
I guess it's similar to renting versus owning, and do we care about that, or can we say anything about that? In this situation, the use is just not limited. We're trying to limit a business, taking money off of it. I get it. I don't want my neighbor to be boarding animals. Trying to respect the line between residential and commercial, because we do, didn't we have someone come here last month that did the dog grooming over there by Citrus?
Yeah, in the current code, we, even for commercial properties, we require a special use for animal services. And that's because a lot of them have outdoor needs, whether it's related to the business directly, or, you know, customers coming in and out.
Okay.
That's the thought behind it.
That is, specifically a home occupation. With regard to the taxi services, I know that there are contractors who work for large taxi companies and park the...
Yes.
Park their marked taxis at their home overnight. They're not running, it's not a home occupation.
No.
So, but you would object to that, Tom?
I would just, I would have assumed it was a home occupation. I guess I'm just unclear on the definition.
So we have a lot of people that bring their work trucks home and whatnot. So you'll see, you know, the Sprinter vans parked in, in the residential driveways. Zoning code doesn't regulate that.
It says home occupation.
Well, actually, it does currently. There is a section that says, in residence districts, of course, it's, it says parking of trucks and all commercial vehicles is prohibited in all residence districts, except within an enclosed garage.
The, I think, commercial is viewed differently than what you're thinking.
I'm not talking commercial.
You said commercial vehicles.
Commercial vehicles.
Correct.
Which is defined in another chapter, but it has the word trucks, which is obviously, I don't know what that means, as written. I don't know if that's been enforced.
We don't view it that way, historically.
What way?
In the way that you're presenting it. We don't, if somebody...
I was just reading it.
If somebody has a Sprinter van, and it's related to their work, we don't go after them. We don't call that a commercial vehicle. Commercial vehicle would be based on the definition that code, I believe it's based on the type of plate, which are those larger vehicles.
I believe is, D-plates are higher.
Yes.
We do regulate if they're parking it at the house. But we're venturing into what code enforcement's out there doing, and the three, those of us that are out there are not doing code enforcement every day, so...
I think, I feel like I caused all this confusion, because when I read it, taxi, limo, van, or bus services, my mind immediately goes to that physical object. And you're saying I can't park that object here, but that's not what this code is saying.
Correct.
So...
Home occupation.
Mea culpa. But maybe someone else reads this and gets confused as well.
I don't think it's, I'm, sorry, I don't think it's unreasonable, that staff maybe to let's revisit it, because we're all looking at it, saying, what do you, how do you define a tow truck? What's a Sprinter van? What if it's a Stanley Steamer Sprinter van? Does it matter if it's got a commercial logo on it? If it's a tow truck, not throwing shade on Stanley Steamer, I'm just giving an example, right? It's a tow truck, if it's a short school bus, if it's a large school bus, if it's a limo, if it's a Class D, at almost every landscaping company, what if you own a landscaping company, and you come there with just the truck, but it's a Class F plate or Class H, you know? What is it that we're gonna allow? And I think it varies by each municipality. It's not like a bread and butter cut, so it's really up to the village to kind of say what we're gonna do. I think maybe that warrants, just so that we all are on the same page. Can't expect everyone else to understand if we can't be in agreement either.
And I don't know that the, that regulation that prohibited trucks and commercial vehicles parking in residence districts in a driveway has transferred into the, into the amendments here. I'm trying to...
I don't think so.
Find it. So there may be no regulation. I haven't looked through the parking regulations.
Yeah, I don't think we translated it, because it's rarely enforced.
Right, okay. Something to think about, whether there should be a reasonable limitation on, can someone bring their semi-truck and park it in their driveway?
Right, in residential area.
Yeah.
Right, I would agree that that should not occur.
Well, if it's a, I think that's regulated in the other chapter. We can discuss it more, but if it's a semi-truck, I don't think it would be allowed, no matter what.
Just trying to find the regulation, but that doesn't deal with home occupation, so I'm sorry.
Yes. Like I said, we were revisiting a lot of the vehicle stuff for storage. If we're moving on to 7.19, Mr. Chair, this is another section, or sorry, 7.2 through 7.1, I believe it's 7, 7.20, 7.24. I think that's it. Anything related to outdoor storage or outdoor dining, we are revisiting already, based on the feedback we already heard from the commissioners and the public. So I don't think it would be worthwhile revisiting those sections right now.
I think we did skip over 7.19, manufacturing accessory uses in that district. This is largely carried over from the existing code. I think just maybe a few tweaks, grammatical errors, but no substantial changes to this section. But of course, it can still be discussed.
And you're correct, we did skip over that. Let's go to 721, recreational vehicles. I didn't have anything. Tom, do you have anything on that?
Uh, sorry, 7.1...
7.21.
21.
Yeah, I, I think I should have an RV and a boat.
I think I should be allowed to have both. That's my opinion.
Other commissioners?
I've seen people that do not take care of it, and it's kind of an eyesore if you don't do it the right way. If there's a way for us to reg, I don't know, we keep running into kind of the issues with homeowners. If there's a way to regulate it, and you're, it's in good taste, or it looks good, and I recognize that definition's not the ideal legal definition, but there's a difference between someone just kind of having a boat on their front, that...
Well, they can't be parked in the front yard area, and...
There's a house right behind.
What if it's a corner lot? Because I think I have one near my neighborhood, where...
Oh, the side yard adjoining a street is what we call it in the current code.
So they're allowed to park there, though, right?
I think so.
Yep. It has to be on a hard surface, and can't be permanently affixed to the ground, can't...
Be used for dwelling purposes.
Dwelling purposes. But to your point...
I'm not a person that has either, but someday I might want both, you know? It seems like those people who have one might very well want the other. They're outdoorsy, recreational people.
Put the boat in the garage. Chase some water, ski as well, or just boat?
I think it's just boats.
The restriction is if they're both outside. The restriction is if they're both outside.
Usually those are on trailers.
Well, that's what I was getting at, but if the boat's on a trailer too, but so our jet skis or wave runners, are those allowed?
If they're on a trailer, we would treat them as the trailer, I believe.
What was the question?
Type of boat are we, I guess maybe, wouldn't the boat be on a trailer? Are we talking like a rowboat or a paddleboat that's sitting on? What boat is not on a trailer?
I believe-
Kayak. I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not a boater, but I'm thinking like, maybe my kid is on a paddleboat, I could see it, you know, but I don't, my understanding is the fiberglass is incredibly expensive and that's why you don't usually beach the boat.
No, kayaks you don't put on trailers, you put those on top you can, but they're not typically stored on trailers. Kayaks or canoes.
How many lots have room with these restrictions for both a boat and a motorhome?
That's what I'm saying, they did, well, my argument is, this isn't currently restricted, right? And we don't have a big problem?
It is restricted, this is current code that's been around for-
You can't have both?
Decades, you can have a boat, you just can't have-
Both, you can't have both.
Both under the current regulations and what's proposed.
You can have both parked in the, in the front, on concrete.
All right, this is my opinion.
Outside.
You could probably have a boat inside a garage, right?
Of course.
If you have the boat in the garage, you can have the motorhome in the driveway.
Get in a kayak, go down and buy in a kayak today.
Make your nitpicking.
Just to challenge the code.
Okay. I dream big, someday I might want to exercise that right.
Any other comments on that section?
You going to fight to the death on that, Tom?
No.
722, solar energy systems.
Steph, I just wanted, there was a public comment on it, it did raise a good point, I just want to understand it, I don't have the roof mounted solars, but I'd imagine you'd want to put it on whatever side captures the most sun.
Typically, the south side.
Right, and so that's what I'm thinking, if that, if the north side is on the street, we would allow the houses to put it facing south, correct? There's not going to be any restriction on here that would stop-
No.
The homeowner from maximizing which side of the roof they're using.
I don't believe so.
I think it's just maybe the wording of B1, where it says, "Only building integrated or flush-mounted solar energy may be installed on street-facing building elevations," but we're not limiting it to-
Yeah, I think that's, older solar panels you'll see stick out, we do have a few in town that kind of project out or at an angle, based on the roof's alignment. That's what that's related to. So, you want to make them look nicer apparently.
This is, this is all new, right? We never had any-
Yes, so this is a state requirement to have this in the zoning ordinance, some regulations regarding this and other renewable power.
They don't make those ones anymore, that stick out or you don't know?
Uh, generally, they're more flush to the roof nowadays, some of the older ones were like that.
And I think the intent of that code that says, "Only building integrated and or flush-mounted solar energy systems may be installed on the street-facing building elevations," is so that you don't get the ones that are high pitched on the front of the house. You can have the high pitched on the back of the house, and I think that most modern-day systems have found that they're really not all that efficient or the expense is not worth it. So, when you look at modern-day systems, they basically just overload the sunny sides, the south and west, and don't put anything on the north side because even if they have the exposure, it's just, there's some cost benefit analysis that just doesn't make it popular anymore. But what this is saying is that if you want to do the ones that really, you basically have to go against the slope of your roof in order to get it pitched so that it can catch the sun, it just says, "You don't want to see that on the front of the house."
Why don't you want, why?
Because-
For aesthetics or-
Because it's aesthetics.
Are we talking about B1?
Yeah.
That is related to actual building facades, not roofs.
Say that again?
There, it's related to building facades, so not the roof. So, that's like-
Ah.
Integrated building design, it's not really common. I've only really seen it on LEED buildings, which are the sustainability.
So, the issue we were discussing was three.
Yeah, I think, are you, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Did you bring this in, Scott, or did Duncan just?
We directed Duncan to craft regulations per, basically the state requirements are, you just have to have regulations in your zoning code that allows it in some way.
This isn't lifted from some other community?
It could be. It, he usually just does the industry standard.
All right. Anybody else comment? Let's go on to swimming pools and hot tubs.
We already have Commissioner Simpson's comments, because he discussed it last meeting. And we're just, we're working with, we're going to have to talk with building department.
Yeah, the only thing I looked at was just, if we require a fence, they dig down where we run electric and water lines and that just doesn't seem-
Yeah, what will likely happen is we'll likely pull out the hot tubs from the swimming pool regulation.
Can we also pull out raised swimming pools? There is a property in the village that has a raised swimming pool with a fenced-in deck just around the entry to the pool, but the whole pool is unenclosed, it's just sitting out open yard, which I think's fine because it's a raised pool.
The requirement is, it just says, "As per the building code."
Okay.
So, I don't know if that was required at the time or-
The International Building Code, I know, does have fence regulations for all types of pools, so-
I just don't know if they're required because of the deck around the above-ground pool.
It's related, it's related to how deep is that pool? And if it's, I believe it's four feet, so if it's taller than four feet, then a kid can't get in it unless it's set where the stairs are, and so that's why the requirements are around the stairs. And a lot of times you get around the fence requirement if you have those removable stairs or lockable stairs. What the building department usually typically likes to see is, if you have a six-foot fence around your yard already, that fulfills the fence requirement, you just need a self-closing gate so that if the kid, if someone runs through it, the gate isn't left open for all the other neighborhood kids just to get into your backyard. So, a lot of this does stem from the safety requirements of pools based on the depth of how much water there is, so.
Okay. And it sounds like it's covered in the building code, so the purpose of A is really to flag it, to say, FYI, if you buy this hot tub from Costco, again, you might have to buy a fence too.
Yes, yeah, generally nowadays, they know.
So, if they have a built-up pool, right, they bought it at Costco, whatever it is, as long as the steps can come out or they have that slide that covers it, they're okay?
I would love to give you an answer, I have no idea.
I can, I can give you a basic answer.
Yeah.
Because we're not, we're not doing the building code.
Sure.
It's, number one, you need a pool permit because we count pools as lot coverage, you need a permit to get it.
Okay.
Because you're going to have to run electric to it, water drains, whatever else is going to it. What the building code looks at is says, "Okay, how are you making it safe to meet the safety requirements?" If, if it's only two feet tall, then they're going to say, "You need a fence around it" or "You need a fence around your yard" because anyone could fall into it, crawl and get into it. If it is four feet tall, or whatever that requirement is, then they don't worry about people crawling into it, they worry about them using the stairs or ladder to get into it. And then as long as you have a way to disrupt that fence or ladder, which is a removable ladder, a lockable gate on the ladder, something like that, then they, they do that.
Got it.
So, if you've ever seen one of those above-ground pools that has a little fence around the outside of the pool, that's probably because you needed a fence in order to have that pool, they didn't have a fence around the yard. So, there's a lot of different measures that the building department, when it goes through permitting, can find an acceptable standard that meets that.
Got it, perfect. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, 725.
24.
I thought we skipped it because we-
I thought we weren't going to discuss-
Sorry, I misquoted, 724 should still be in there. I just saw storage and I flagged in my HUD, so if you want to discuss anything, it's 724.
Okay, so we will cover 724 temporary storage units.
Nothing?
Those are those things like when you're moving those boxes?
Those pods, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a previous regulation, the consultant made a few tweaks to it, but it's pretty much the same. I think the biggest change was changing it to 30 days instead of 15 days.
And there's no permit fee.
Which is good.
Yeah.
I see the permit fees. Okay. 725, tents.
I guess my question here is, does reference to the village's tent guidelines? I know the fire department requires permits for certain types of tents, is that what the tent guidelines are?
Yes.
Yes.
We require, it goes through community development, a permit, and it gets sent to review for those entities, usually they're tied to some event.
Okay, so if I'm putting my camping tent in the backyard, that doesn't fall within the tent guidelines, it's exempt?
Unless it becomes a nuisance, then no, you're fine.
Or those pop-up ones, if you're doing a graduation party, not the ones that need a professional, but they expand, all right.
Okay.
Black party survives.
Section 726, vending machines. 727, wind and energy conversion systems.
So, this is all new for like windmill-type facilities?
Renewable, yes.
Renewable energy?
Correct.
I think the one addition that I had made to this was a concern over-
Falls down.
Having a fall zone for these. If there's a tornado or severe storm and one of these with the blades were to fall over, crash into a neighbor's house, or fall into someone's neighboring property, cause injury or property damage, so you'd, these have to be setback equal to the height of the tower from property lines or principal structures. That's a bit severe, that makes it difficult for a taller one of these to go in someone's residential backyard.
So, that's paragraph C2 that you did there.
Uh, B1, for a ground-mounted system, only allowed in the rear yard and setback equal to the distance at least, equal to the tower's height excluding blades, yeah, from lot lines and principal buildings.
So, tower height is the height above grade of the vertical tower, exclusive of blades.
And I think that's generally how we regulate other towers, regulate the fall zones, correct?
It is for telecommunications towers, yes.
I feel like a minimum where this starts to apply would be appropriate, I'm just thinking those vertical turbine-type wind systems that are basically pole-mounted and there's not the perpendicular swinging arms, it's just a, it's a turbine that goes around and around. If I want an eight-foot-tall one in my backyard, does it really need to be eight feet away from my property line?
You're talking about like the ones that look like a vortex?
Yeah, that's been parallel to the pole, or really any kind that's eight feet tall, does it really need to apply, or is it really only when it starts getting to be a hazard to your adjacent property that we want to regulate?
You're saying, the assumption in this is that-
That it's very tall. Well, just that it's very tall.
Vertical, not horizontal.
Not really, it's more that there's a pole that can be as high as the house in the backyard.
And if that falls, you're going past your property line.
Now-
So, do you flag poles?
Now, I was just going to say that, is it much different than a flagpole? I raise this because it might be overkill.
And we discuss up to the commission.
I would, I would offer to set a minimum or maximum height that it can be within a setback, and after that, it's, it'd be one foot for every one foot away, further away or something.
Anybody else?
I mean, maybe it is kind of silly to think about this thing tipping over because it has to have a right foundation on things, it should be inspected, so it's not, we shouldn't, I mean, if we kind of go on this idea of like, just in case it tips over, then that maybe, just as you said, flag poles will fall into that too, or lots of things, so. Yeah, I think perhaps it could be closer to the property line. By how much, to what degree, I don't have a, there's not a rule in my mind that this takes out, but.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, and as far as wind turbines go, I thought I've heard before that they work much more, much more efficient when they're above the tree line, but that could be like 80 feet up, so I don't know how that would play out, so.
Generally, you won't see that on a residential property. You'd see that on a wind farm, generally. We don't have a lot of space for those.
In section, subsection C3, increased system height may be granted through the special use approval process. Usually, height is like a bulk regulation that's processed through variance process. Do you know why it says special use and want to change that?
I think it's related to the safety aspect and general welfare.
Effect on the neighbor's property?
Yeah.
Is that?
Okay.
We can certainly change it, we'd have to then just put a height regulation and remove that language and then it'd be a variance request, but I don't know how, how you can prove uniqueness.
So, and I'm going to ask this question and you might not have the answer because I know our consultant kind of cut and pasted this in. So, if they are trying to do C3 and have an increased height, so is that first a variance and then also a special use, is that really what that's saying?
I think it's just saying special use.
It's, but it's-
Because it says it may be granted.
I don't understand how you get over the bulk standard of there's a height requirement though, and just say it's a special. I can understand that if you say, if you're doing a taller, that it might have a negative effect on the neighbors and it warrants a special use, but doesn't it still require a variance?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think you could have it as a separate use classification.
Okay.
Wind energy conversion systems over 35 feet or the building height regulations of the subject zoning district are considered a special use.
So, does that mean you have to add it to the use table and then add it as a special use there?
This is all in the accessory use section. We have many things that require special use as an accessory use. Otherwise, we'd have to put the whole chapter in the table.
And this is not just residential, this would be any zoning district?
Correct. I will have to double-check with state regulations then.
Okay.
Because they're permitted by right, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
For setbacks with the wind turbine idea, I would imagine that the blades can't go over property lines or-
Yeah, correct.
It's pretty obvious.
All right, that does it for Article 7. It's 930. Shall we press on and see if we can get to Section 8 and 9?
I'd rather split.
What I will say is, just because of how the evening's gone, we will be looking at a special meeting date.
Oh, with, two weeks from tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Well, we need to continue this to a specific date.
Correct, well, at the end, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Just for everybody that's aware, you had the polls, dates, we sent an email regarding saving those dates, so.
The, I'd also point out that the next article, whenever we get to that, Article 8, wireless telecommun- whenever we get to that, Article 8 wireless telecommunications facilities, is a newer article that was adopted, went through Planning and Zoning Commission within the last probably year and a half? Two years? Longer than that?
That's right.
Four years ago, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And is largely unchanged except for, I think, the very last one new section that was added for microcell networks, so.
Yeah, if we want to talk about that really quick, then we can cross that article off.
I don't have any comments on it.
I would recommend we get through that one only because when it was, I think it was introduced maybe four to five years ago now. The director did this one at the time and he was very meticulous. That's why you don't see a lot of changes, other than this new microcell.
I didn't.
Oh, John, John drafted this, so we should maybe scrutinize it more.
The federal requirement for stuff.
But anyways, if we, if we can take this one off and at least open it and see if anyone has any comments, then we'd be, we'd be starting with parking next time, which is much more interesting.
So what I'm hearing from the commission, no comments on the proposed language for that article, for telecommunications?
Let's see what the commissioners think. You have a problem? I agree with the village attorney that the sections are essentially complete. What's the microcell network?
Microcell networks are, you've seen them popping up. Those are the little things that end up on the top of a, like a light pole.
And on water towers?
Not necessarily on the water towers, but they're real, they're the real little ones that basically support the larger network for, to fix service in a lowly served.
Usually you see them with institutions. They're on campuses a lot.
And, and they've, they've been allowed because there's a lot of rules and regulations allowing them in the right of ways, so.
Okay. So we'll stop here at the end of section, Article 8. Sorry, Brian, we won't get to your questions on Section 9 or Krista, your Section 12, so.
Commissioner, I think, or Chair, I think we did want to open up to people who are in the audience before we close.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. But we're gonna, we're gonna stop at the conclusion of Article 8. So before we close all business on this public hearing, Mr. Daniel, would you like to address the commission?
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Mark Daniel, I appeared at the meeting, two meetings ago, and I missed May to do a wedding. And I won't be here the 25th because I have other zoning hearings. I did submit a letter in May. I was not here at that meeting, but I will mention it here. I would ask that you consider it as part of the record. There are some comments about fences in there that are pretty significant. I would consider that you consider only open fences in the street side of a corner side yard. You've got to pay attention to the tunnel that you're creating. If you put that fence up to within five feet of the lot line, regardless of whether you set site triangles or not, neighborhoods are neighborhoods. Take a look what Elmhurst does. They allow the fence up to the front of the house, which is tied to the setback usually on the turn, the street, and you make that turn. And that causes the fence to drop down or change to an open fence setting. In Oakbrook, pay attention to their ADU or their second residence regulations. They say that you can have a family member or a servant still. It's an interesting regulation. But when you read your definition of accessory use, without a definition of accessory dwelling unit, it's purpose, scope, size of the use. Accessory is not as big as the principal. The purpose is servient to the principal use. It suggests something different by saying accessory uses include accessory dwelling units. It puts a bit of a limit on an accessory dwelling unit. If your intent is to open it up to me as an attorney and a summer law clerk who can live in the house that I have as an accessory dwelling unit, there's a problem with the code. There's a disconnect there. Can a home occupation occur in an accessory dwelling unit? Do I get two boats? Because I have one dwelling unit and another, and each of us have boats? Those questions need to be thought through. Maybe you need to look at the definitions a little bit. If you have two units on a lot, you're focusing on principal residents. Okay? On the issue with height on, on the WEX units, good point was made on the special use, Mr. Zimax, right? You can do it as a special use. Lombard, when they authorize height changes above what the regulatory height is as a special use, they set a cap. So you could say five feet above the maximum building height in the district. I don't know. But that's something to think about. If it's a special use, it needs to be defined with a cap. And that's what Lombard does with their B4A regulations. You'll see an example of it there. Decibels. Noise for WEX, it's one of the most popular complaints now that you'll have. Glen Ellen's had battles over it. Joe Abel, a planner, had issues with it. Noise from WEX should be limited to a certain decibel level or no more than X decibels above the background ambient noise. If you're going to elevate them, remember that sound travels in a cone and it's going to affect the neighborhood. So you certainly want to have the noise regulation. The home occupation regulations, I worry that in discussing, you know, this van service or taxi service, that you have a lack of definitions. Rush home infusion, where my wife works, that service is operated out of a residence. All the cars are somewhere else. All the drivers are somewhere else. You could call them gig drivers or independent contractors or employees, but they have their own cars. It's the use of the term service that matters. A towing service could have a dispatch, but not have the impacts of a towing yard. So if you, if you think about someone who's delivering those IV bags to in-home healthcare people, you're basically taking away a very popular home business. You look anywhere in the country and you'll, and you'll see that. Those drivers exist in every single community and a lot of those businesses are operated out of the homes. I do think that you have a home business regulation that allows everything unless it's excluded. I don't think staff has the discretion to exclude a lot of these home businesses, so try to pay attention to it. Camp Town Hills was in a situation where they didn't exclude a lot of things. Every, they couldn't possibly list all the home businesses and their zoning ordinance actually says that. And then a trustee who's a massage therapist, someone else in another community who's got a hair salon, they're doing it out of their home and people get attacked over it. But the, the list is non-exclusive. So it's worth, worth thinking about that. I don't want to get too far into the?
You're not suggesting the village can't prohibit certain home occupations because as long as we allow lawful use to occur in some zoning district and we're not prohibiting a lawful use anywhere in the village, we could certainly say certain uses are inappropriate to be conducted out of a house, right?
Right, but you have to say it. So this, this question you asked about the tent, somebody answered that. And when I go to the definition of tent, it defines the tent that kids put up every weekend. There's no distinction between that and a commercial tent. So you have to pay attention to the definitions. And I, again, I said it last time. You've got to pay very close attention to the definitions. The comments about these containers in your yards. Everyone was focused on sheds. You have a regulation for stacks of firewood, but some people like me have containers for firewood. If I were to record a cord of firewood and I don't want to stack it out in the open and I want to put it in a container so it dries out, prevents termites, bugs, weeds that are, you know, that grow among those things, I need 18 to 21 square feet of ground coverage. So I, I wonder what these containers are that are no more than 12 feet? Does it include the containers that you have for hoses? Why don't you put a height limit on it before it's defined as one of those containers that's limited to the 12 feet? Because it prevents people from putting things away in their yard inadvertently. I couldn't have at least four or five things that I've had in my side yard next to my neighbor's house that's never been complained about. They store firewood, they store my hoses, they store some of the gardening stuff. I agree with the comments about the accessory dwelling units when it comes to managing the appearance above ground. I do worry that if you have a call space situation, it, it creates a bit of a problem. Granted, people can use a basement that's got a seven-foot ceiling, but if you have utilities down there or storage down there and it's the, I forget what you call it, the grandma unit or the granny's house or whatever it is, my mom ought to be able to walk to the basement and not have to crawl into it when I'm out of town. She's 83. I appreciate the time you guys have spent. I did go through the zoning ordinance in a lot of detail. I probably will not see you again. I was hoping to hear some of the accessory use discussions on fleet vehicles and outdoor storage because that is of critical importance and I'm gonna miss that. So I'll see where it comes out. I'll check with David Meek to see if he can be here next time. But I wish you the best on it. I do have serious concerns about over-regulating and requiring special uses too much. Okay? That's, that's one of the things that I keep hearing. Special use, special use, special use. And it's only because you want to regulate that use isn't offensive. It just has a need for regulation and attention. It doesn't, it, it's not something you can easily deny as a special use. So I, I do worry about the burdens that you put on folks, whether it's residential or commercial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hello, my name is Krista Stenilis and I'm a member of the Environmental Improvement Committee of the Village of Westmont. I had sent in some comments, so I just wanted to speak about those tonight regarding lighting ordinance. So as part of the committee, we're so excited to see that this has been added to the ordinance because outdoor lighting was previously not regulated. So the current ordinance regulates color temperature, direction of light, and light trespass. But there's a few exclusions or two exclusions that I just wanted to speak about. The first one being in Section 12.01. It states that all light fixtures except motion detector activated lighting must be fully shielded so that the lighting element is not visible to an observer at any property line as measured at five feet above grade. So the concern there is that we're just providing exception for motion detector activated lighting. I think nuisance lighting, even when intermittent, is still loose nuisance lighting. It can still be problematic to neighboring properties. The motion activation relies on calibration of the system and that's not often done very well. So it can be responsive to any sort of motion within the yard. It might be not necessarily directed at the area that they're looking to protect for safety. So when that is not regulated, then the regulation of any of the lighting in that area falls under the Section 12.01G for light trespass. And the concern is that how well, in the code review process, for building permit review process, sorry, will that be able to be determined? There is both a performance and a prescriptive method for compliance currently. And with the prescriptive method, I think it would be difficult to see if they're actually meeting the requirements of the .5-foot candles for residential side lot lines and the one-foot candle for all other lot lines. So I just wanted to flag that. And the second one is Section 12.01B9. It states that lighting regulations do not apply to light fixtures with a light output of no more than 1,500 lumens. So basically, that's excluding the entire Section 12 of the ordinance for light regulations for anything under what equates to, I'll just give it in terms of wattage as we kind of are familiar with looking and purchasing light bulbs or familiar with purchasing based on wattage and kind of understanding what that output means. So that equates to about a 100 white watt incandescent bulb or a 13 to 18 watt LED bulb. So basically, anything that's under like 100 watt incandescent bulb light output would not be required to meet the color temperature, the cutoff, or any of the light trespass requirements. I understand that this was done not to put an undue burden on commercial properties, but I think we need to also look at, not only in the environmental impacts, but also issues with neighboring properties and their rights also. I don't know if, would it be okay? I brought a light sample with me. It's not quite the 1,500, it's just 1,200 watt. But would it be okay if I turned it on just to show you what that looks like if it's mounted on a neighbor property? Is that okay? Yeah. So that's fairly bright, right? So we're just looking at it from an environmental aspect. I know we're, you know, in the ordinance as we're balancing concerns for environment, for safety, over-regulation of private properties and enforcement practicalities. But I just want to point out from an environmental concern, there are a lot of impacts that the color temperature and the amount of light and the direction of light. Basically, I think since the advent of LED, we've allowed lighting to kind of, to just grow. It's, lighting's become a lot cheaper, so we've put a lot more of it out. And if you look at any sort of solar studies, there's a lot more of it just going out into space rather than where it needs to be. And I think the intent of the ordinance should be to, to basically get the light where we need it to be for safety. In terms of safety, if we're putting a lot of light out and there's other areas that are dark or nearby, I don't think that we're meeting our intent on safety because we're creating glare issues. Uniform lighting, lighting where it's needed is what, what we really need for safety and for the environmental concerns. And I think if people are looking to protect their own property or light their own property, I don't think it puts any sort of undue burden to say that's fine, but don't spill the light onto other properties, so. Is it? If there are any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Schering, you're up.
Hi, my name is Brian Schering. I live at 5719 Buck Court. I was really hoping we'd get to Article 9 today because that's all my suggestions are. So in anticipation of that. First, if it hasn't already resolved to do so, I urge the Village of Westmont to commission a parking study at the earliest opportunity and make the results of the study public. My understanding is that the new ordinance presents the parking requirements in an easier format to understand, but does not drastically change those requirements. I'm concerned that some of our minimums are still set too high, particularly for restaurants and video gaming. And I would also like to see how well the general minimum of two and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet compares to real-world usage post-pandemic. In Section 9.2, Table 9.1, I wanted to suggest adding a column for maximum parking entitlements and to place a cap on any business types whose maximum capacity and staffing can be easily calculated. I was thinking bars, restaurants, offices being kind of three immediate examples that came to mind. In Section 9.4C, as with car share services, I would like to suggest that each curbside pickup space reduce the number of required spaces by four. I'm thinking of those banks of spaces you see at the Jewel and the Mariano's and similar businesses. I'm gonna be using one later tonight, actually. So these spaces allow stores to process customers more effectively and efficiently and it minimizes the overall need for parking. And depending on the business type, I think it's something we should encourage. And my final one, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of an allergy today. I think it would go under 9.5, but I think a little background is in order. So I chose, this is 980 Oakmont Lane. It is a multi-story office building with about 100,000 total square feet. And according to the parking minimums, it would have about a minimum of 250 parking spaces. And if you count them all, it's actually pretty close to that right now. I think it's only just above it. But you can kind of see how much space that minimum takes up. You could almost fit an entire other office building down here. And so given that, I assume it's probably not the kind of land usage we want to encourage. I had a fairly complicated one, but I will try to say it as best I can. Require the construction of a parking garage. If the square footage of a surface lot meeting the minimum parking requirement, If the square footage of a surface lot meeting the minimum parking requirement would exceed the footprint of the building by a factor of, I went with two and a half to three. I think, again, a parking study would help us figure out what the optimal ratio would be. If nothing else, maybe it could just be a stipulation for the ORs zone where it seems to be most prevalent. And in closing, I guess just why parking is kind of near and dear to my heart is just in the current housing crisis, I think every wasted space is something we can't afford like we used to, and so anything we can do to minimize that and create space for more bikeable and walkable design, I think, just also helps the city improve its happiness and well-being. And that's all I really had. I look forward to hearing the discussion about it next time. So thank you all for your time.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right on. Open forum.
I think we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing first.
You're right, you're right. Okay, so we got to Article 8. The chair would accept a motion to continue zoning amendment discussion.
Continue the public hearing for?
June 25th. A special meeting date.
Date certain, 6:00 PM.
Motion, Simpson.
Second.
Motion, Simpson, second.
This is to continue.
To continue. Specific date. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
25th. Third? 25th. 25th.
Okay, miscellaneous, next regular meeting will be on the 9th of July at our special meeting, two weeks from tonight, 25th.
We're expecting a good caseload for that meeting.
For the July meeting, we're gonna get our pound of flesh out of you guys.
Chair, so for the 25th, we're continuing just the, just this. We're not hearing any other petitions for.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay, is the intention that we're gonna have the updates for, from staff on Section 7.14 and 7.20, where we're gonna get, is the goal to finish all of it, basically, then, by?
The goal for the special meeting is to finish all commissioner comments here one last time for the public.
Okay.
And then we'd come back with revisions. We do not have enough time at the staff level to get those revisions before the June 25th meeting.
And when you said last comments from the public, assuming.
They'll be revised.
And, yeah. Once staff presents the revisions, there'd still be an opportunity for public comment. Yeah.
Is it okay that I just.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Simpson.
Still move?
We need to take offer open forum.
Open forum.
If there's anyone interested.
We did.
No, I think we.
We stopped.
Okay, we didn't. All right, open forum. Is there anyone present who would like to address this commission on anything that was not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Chair would accept a motion to adjourn.
Simpson.
Simpson.
Second.
Second, Lynn. All in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.